The Clatsup County Planning Commission meeting on Tuesday, May tenth, two thousand and twenty-two will come to order with staff. Please take the role.
Commissioner Crashhour.
President.
Commissioner Farrar. I see him. He might not be online yet, but he's here. Commissioner Orr.
President.
Commissioner Kwong.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
I'm here.
Chair Gardner.
President.
Commissioner Powers.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. I'd like to welcome the public. The Planning Commission is the official venue for public involvement in planning and community development for Clatsup County. We thank you for your interest and involvement and welcome your thoughts always via email or or both public comments later in the meeting. We're going to have a general public comment period for things not on the agenda. Or sorry, that are not public hearings. So that might be also the appropriate type time to speak on anything Gearheart if we have people in the room for that. And then we're also going to have four public hearings and each one will have separate public comment. Before we got started, get started, I wanted to note that Joanna Lyons-Antley, who I think is on today, is departing and I wanted to take the moment to thank her for all of her great work on behalf of the county and the Planning Commission. More generally, so thank you, Councilor Lyons-Antley. I'm moving on to the agenda. I'll take a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented.
I will adopt the agenda as presented.
Commissioner. Thank you. Commissioner Powers has has moved and Commissioner Farrar has seconded. Any discussion?
I'd just like to apologize for getting on the meeting late. I had a little difficulty connecting.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrar. No problem. Okay, no discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Please say no. The motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll do the business from the public. This is an opportunity for anyone to give a brief presentation about any land use planning issue or county concern that's not on the agenda with public comment. All speakers from the floor are to state their name and address before speaking. If you're appearing in a representative capacity, please identify who you represent. Do we have anyone that wishes to speak? Director Hendrickson, I just wanted to make sure I'm correct in assuming that we won't have public comment under the work session discussion of the Gearheart UGB expansion.
That would be the typical way that we would conduct business. However, it's really at the discretion of the Planning Commission.
Okay. I think if anyone wants to speak on that, this is the best time for that. So, but it sounds like we don't have anyone interested in speaking on that at this time or any other issues. So we'll go ahead and move on. And so we're moving on to the work session. It looks like we have Scott Fragonezki.
Yes, Fragonezki.
Fragonezki, okay.
Close enough.
From Three J Consulting to discuss an overview of the potential proposed City of Gearheart UGB Urban Growth Boundary Adjustment Process.
Yeah, and Chad Sweet, the city administrator is also on. And I think I'm pretty much going to do the presentation today, but he may chime in with some additional information as I go through this. It's a pretty quick presentation. I just wanted to be able to share with you all, you know, the effort that's going on. Hopefully, we'll get to the point where we come back to you and have a public hearing where we, once we get to the approval from DLCD to do this UGB swap that we've been working on. So I will present, if I can share my screen now, I'll start the quick presentation. Hopefully, everyone can see that. Again, thank you for allowing me to be here at the Planning Commission meeting today and share this with you. It's something that I've shared with both the city council at Gearheart as well as the Planning Commission. So this is a brief overview presentation of what we've been working on and it gives you a little timeline. As I mentioned before, I think I'm hoping that we'll come back to you all. Once we get to the point where we will make some decisions about whether this will happen or not. So there's about thirty-four acres that the city wishes to swap for a portion of the urban growth boundary. It's not buildable. So there's a large amount of the urban growth boundary. It's west of the vegetative line. Like on the coast that will never really be developable. And there's about thirty-four acres, which is this map here that's just north of the city limits and urban growth boundary. That we're looking at with a goal of some new residential homes as well as a fire, a new fire, a police station. That's one of the biggest things that the city is really interested in is building a new police and fire station that would be outside of the tsunami inundation zone. Another part of this would be about a five acre park would be dedicated as part of this for the city. This is just a little air photo of it, but if you're familiar with the area, Highway one oh one is right here and then Highlands Road is the north part of where that UGB swap would be taking place. If you're familiar with the Delaware Beach Access Road there on Highlands, that's where that is. The police and fire station would be right about here. If you notice, this is the highest point and I'll show you some of the mappings to actually in the city of Gearheart. That was why this site was selected was because of its elevation. This map shows the proposed swap and the, which is the green area. So you can see the current police and fire station are down here downtown. The proposal would be to move them up to this location here with this green area being swapped for this purple area. So if you notice, this whole area is not buildable because it's, again, I mentioned this, but west of the vegetative line. So there's a large area that we would be proposing to remove from the urban growth boundary and swap for this green area here. This blue site, part of what we need, what we're required to do, DLCD wants us to take a look at alternative sites. So we can't just pick one site and say this is the best one. We have to, when we do our study, we have to take a look at different sites. And I'll get into why we didn't pick any other sites to the south or to the east, but there's a lot of geographical reasons why it's very difficult to expand in those areas. So anyway, we can go back to this map, but this is an important one because it shows the area proposed being brought in and the area being proposed to remove. So this is a little different than a traditional urban growth boundary expansion where you would just say, we're going to expand this area and this is what we need to do. I recently did one in Rockaway Beach where we brought in ten acres for critical facilities similar to this where the idea would be to move police, fire and public works out of the tsunami inundation zone. So it's something that a lot of coastal cities are looking at doing. One of the reasons I mentioned this before, but you can see this little purple area is the high spot, which is actually where you're looking at, where we're looking at placing that police and fire. It's showed interestingly enough on the Dagami map, it shows that it's within the double XL tsunami inundation scenario. However, the site was actually, we did a site survey and it's it's about sixty-four feet, I believe, which is actually out of the XXL tsunami invasion zone. So it's the only site in the city that's out of that, that zone. When looking at, you know, where we could expand to put this, part of the issue is that there's a large continuous wetland, obviously this to the east and then water and riparian areas to the south. So really, when looking at expansion areas, it was very difficult to hone in on anything other than looking at areas at the north boundary of the city limits and urban growth boundary. One kind of neat thing we did is we looked at access to the site. So that we wanted to make sure that if we did move these critical facilities, they would still be adequate access. So this is, this is assuming a five minute drive from the police and fire station. So as you can see, it's actually, there's almost better access to the area to the north when the proposed area. So part of this, we're looking at both traffic, environmental, public works in terms of being able to serve it with with water. There's a whole host of things that we need to look at while doing this type of proposal. A little bit of background, we've been working with DLCD and their regional reps because it's really important that the state, you know, has buy-in on this. Obviously, the city will need to amend its comprehensive plan and zoning maps. The county would also have to do that. So I think that's one of the main reasons I'm here today is that this is really a partnership between the city and the county because the decision in the areas, both the county and the city would have to amend the UGB and also your comp, any of the comp plan amendments that would go along with that because obviously the county would be taking the area that we were removing from the urban growth boundary, even though it's not developable. It's, that would be then now county land. So both the city and the county will have to go through public hearings to accomplish this goal. Just a little more background. In September, the city entered into a contingent land transfer agreement with the property owner. So the idea would be that if this, this all works out, that the city would then be given that land for the police and fire station as well as the park. Also, a preliminary geotech investigation has been conducted on the site, which is really important because that's got to be submitted as part of the packet or I guess application, you would say to this, to the state when looking at doing something like this. This is a draft site plan. It's not obviously set in stone. This was something that was developed as part of the concept planning for the thirty-four acre site. All the green is our residential lots. There's about forty-six, I believe. Total, some are not, would probably likely be more difficult to build to others. For example, these over here particularly because they're in riparian areas. That's what you're seeing here is riparian areas that would not be buildable on the blue hash mark. The yellow site is the site for the police and fire station. Would be accessed directly through this right of way on the highway one oh one. I think that's also really important because it's a direct access to the highway would be, is really important for those critical facilities to get quick access in and out of the site. So this yellow site would be that two point one four acres for the police and fire. This two point four acres in this light blue is what would be dedicated is the park. There's residential here already to the south. And there would be no, there's no street connection through to that part of the residence. So all of this site would access from Highlands Road. Of course, this is subject to change, but I thought it would be interesting for you all to see at least kind of the beginning thoughts of what, what is planned for the area. So what we're working on now is we have to do a specific analysis to do a UGB expansion or swap. So it's the nice thing, it's slightly simplified because Gearheart's a smaller community and the parcel that's requested to be swapped is less than fifty acres. So it's an administrative decision at the staff level for DLCD. One thing that's important to note is the area of the swap has to be the same size or larger, which we made sure we did about thirty-four acres and it has to also have equivalent zoning. So the area that we're looking at doing the swap is both very similar in their residential zone as what, as what would be the city's residential zone as well. So as part of that, we have to establish the study area. We have to prioritize candidate sites. That's why I mentioned we can't just look at one. We have to look at more than one. And then we have to choose a preferred site based on the goal fourteen boundary location factors. And the product is an application for urban growth boundary swap. So this is what we're working on now. The whole, the goal is to submit this to the state this month so that we can start this process. If all goes well, then we will come back to you and to the city's planning commission and hopefully work through this process. So again, I said establish the study area boundary. We've done that as part of this effort. One of the things that was interesting is for, in two thousand and nine, there was straight, there were statewide restrictions on locating critical facilities within the tsunami inundation zone. That is since removed, but Gearheart has chosen tsunami hazard overlay zone that they have in place, which actually is stricter than the state requirements. So it doesn't allow them to place any critical facilities which within the tsunami hazard overlay. So the issue here is that there really is no other place if the city was to bring in critical facilities in this particular location. Again, why it was chosen. Of course, we'll work with the property owner and the city will work with local, state, federal agencies. Meet all environmental impacts. And then the process here is, you know, we're working on this application for the urban growth boundary. We're hoping to have DLCD review that again this month. We will look at this summer, working with you again to do public hearings concurrently with the city and county to do the UGP swap plus the comp plan amendments and the zone changes that would take place. Then hopefully late summer, maybe August into early September, we'd be looking at action and then development. So that's my quick presentation. I'm going to see if I can stop sharing my screen here. There we go. And hopefully that was interesting. You learned a little bit and I'm open to any questions or thoughts or any conversations we had about it. I just wanted to introduce it to you so that when we do come back later, it's not a shock and you kind of know what we've been working on.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have questions? I don't hear or see, oh, I saw Commissioner Farrar.
Yeah, I had a question. It may have been addressed and I dismissed it. Your, your presentation packed quite a lot in in a short period of time. I don't think I was really prepared for all that was involved. But I do appreciate it and it was a good heads up for me to pay a little closer attention to what's going on here. My question is the, the swap of land, what becomes of the part you're swapping out of this urban growth boundary? I was unclear on what its status will be if this goes through.
So what would happen is the area that would be swapped would become be brought into the UGB would be brought into the city, the area that would be the other area, if you remember the map, I believe is the purple square, that would be now back in the county. So that would be county land. It would then revert back to that same county residential zoning. And then the zoning that would be brought in would be changed to the city's own. So that's why it's a, with both the county and the city, well, and frankly, the state all have to be bought into this idea of doing the swap or, or it won't be successful. So basically what would happen is that would be again county land, it would be residentially the zone. As, as the zoning that is currently.
Well, just interject one kind of concluding thought about that. It, it seems like you're passing off a big responsibility onto the county to wind up with a piece of residential land that I would hate to see residences, residences built upon. So you're kind of passing the buck to the county, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah, well, it's actually, the area that would be swapped would not be built because it's beyond the vegetative line. So there would be no further construction there. The, there are homes there already, but those homes would be remain within the city limits. It's just a section of the land that's to the west of the, essentially a no build line would be then put on the county. So it would be county land would be, it would be the coast would basically be beach.
I appreciate that. And as I say, I, I need to get up to speed on this. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I'd love to share some more detailed maps where we can zoom in and actually take a look at which parcels, and I will do that as we proceed. I think it is important to understand exactly how many parcels, where they're located, what the zoning is. So we can dig into that a little deeper for sure.
That'd be great. Um, this might be a question actually for a city administrator suite. I understand that there's a funding for this on the current ballot due ballots are due May seventeenth. I hope everyone's voted already. And, and so what happens? What happens if it, if it succeeds and what happens if it fails at this point?
Thank you, Commissioner Gardner. And my apologies, I'm actually at home today with a pretty good head cold. So if I have to pause for a moment, just, just bear with me. So yes, the ballot and the ballot question we've got on the seventeenth of May. And at that point, we will find out what the residents of Gearheart really want for themselves. This is kind of like putting the horse back in front of the cart. You know, we're really not sure that the state and the county would be so keen on helping with this swap if the residents of Gearheart are not willing to put some work and money towards the project. So once we go through the election process, we won't necessarily go out to bond until these questions are answered. We don't have to go out to bond until that happens. So we have lots of options and we're trying not to apply any stress or pressure on anybody. But this is just a project we've been working on for some time. So I hope that answers your question, Commissioner Gardner.
Thank you. I'm one thing that I'm unclear on is a few things, but one is, who is the developer of the homes? That's a pretty big new development on the outskirts of the city now. Is that something that the city is undertaking or is that you know, a partnership? How's that working?
So it's a partnership with the developer. So the developer actually owns the entire site currently. So that's why we have an agreement to, to be given that, the park land and the plan for the police and fire. The, the homes would be part of a private development. So that would not be done as part of the city. The city would be receiving the land for free. So that's one of the benefits of the city supporting this project is that we'd get the site and the park as part of the partnership with the private development. And I don't recall the name of a particular developer off the top of my head.
And what would be the density of that development? We've been speaking a lot about the lack of affordable workforce housing throughout the county and that a lot of the new building has been big homes for two people. Mostly vacation homes and short-term rentals versus homes for residents to actually live in. Is there any opportunity to increase density and provide townhomes and other kind of lower price point housing in that development?
At this point, the plan doesn't show townhomes. It shows single family homes only. The one thing that would be different is that the county zoning would be a ten thousand square foot lot. Minimum, if, if we bring it into the urban growth boundary, the city would be down to five thousand square foot lots. So they would be smaller lots at five thousand square feet each.
Actually, Scott, that's not quite right. This is Chad Sweet. Do you mind if I catch in here just real quick?
Please do, Chad.
The current county zoning is two acres per lot. And with density credits, the developers could get about twenty-one lots into that area right now. If they come into the city of Gearheart, it would be a ten thousand square foot lot, which is similar to the way that Gearheart was developed. It's less dense, but still more dense than the county zoning that's on there now.
And I would also say that, and Chad, correct me if I'm wrong, but there are, the short-term rentals are not allowed in the city of Gearheart.
That's correct. These would be single family homes. And if they came into our urban growth boundary, we have our short-term vacation rental program that is actually slowly permits for renting out homes are slowly disappearing and we are definitely becoming more residential in Gearheart just piece by piece. There are, is another opportunity as well that the developers were talking about. It's actually a a group of three or four developers that are all from the local area. They, there may be some space near the highway for some higher density homes as well, which is something that we're interested in because volunteers are having a hard time finding homes around our area. So we're also interested in that.
Thank you. I know the Cannon Beach Fire Protection District, which I'm under, Living in Urchcape, is building townhomes for their firefighters on their fire station property. I think they're going to apply for a fourplex there specifically for that population, which I think is great.
That's very cool idea.
Yeah, it's, it's getting to be that. We really don't have very many firefighters that live east of Highway one oh one. So it's another reason that this project and the location of the fire department is, is looking pretty good to the city.
I'm so you had said originally that there was going to be a five acre park, but then you said it was going to be two point four acres.
I was wrong.
Okay. Okay. Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying.
And, and I looked like that's kind of like a natural, when you talk about a park, you mean like a natural area park, not a developed park?
It hasn't really been determined yet. It could be either or. It's just a park land that the city could choose to do what they would like to do with.
We're, we're also looking at providing a park in an area that there are no parks for the people that live on the east side of Highway one oh one and that portion of Gearheart. So it's another benefit to kind of spreading things out a little bit to our residences.
Thank you. We received public comment from Beth Cameron, a written comment, and I just wanted to note it. It's for the planning commissioners, it's in all of our emails this morning and it will be up on the website if it's not already today for the rest of the public, but she had expressed concern about the site, the project and asked about, well, I'm going to ask you about her questions. So available drinking water. Let's start at that. Is there available drinking water for that development?
Scott, I can take a look at this. So I, the, the current infrastructure is that the city of Gearheart water infrastructure is on both sides of this lot. We actually have a water main that goes up Highlands Lane that feeds the Highlands neighborhood, backfills the Palisades. It does not go into Pinehurst and Surf Pines as a direct connection, but there is an emergency connection that we we supply the city of Warrington with our water pipes. So essentially, we've got water pipes all the way up Pine Ridge Drive that leads into the south part of this lot. And our water mains are on the north part of this lot as well. And we'd like to make a connection there. It's for resiliency. If we can create this loop by bringing these two pipes together, then we are able to handle Highway one oh one water issues or water issues in other neighborhoods. We're able to isolate and it's also for the health of our system. So in order to keep water flowing and for the taste to be good and for everything to be mixed well, you've got to keep water flowing. So this will also provide a looped system to do that. So we've got the infrastructure on both sides and Gearheart is limited in the amount of water that it can take. In the summertime, we are reduced down into a small amount of water that we can take from our aquifer. The reason for this is not that the aquifer necessarily couldn't handle it. It's quite a big aquifer that we pull from underneath about a hundred and sixty-five feet down. And it's beautiful, clean water. But it, it's relationship to where it's located next to the Neacoxie Creek because it's in a certain amount of distance to the pumps, we have to cut down on the summertime and that's when we rely on Warrington. Warrington's water system is actually behind Gearheart. We are the first customer of the Warrington water system. So essentially Gearheart is able to provide seventy-five percent of the water for the city of Gearheart and Warrington helps us out with twenty-five percent. We're working on putting together our water agreements with Warrington and then we're working on putting together water conservation plans. Gearheart over the last few years because of our water conservation work has been actually spending less and less water. Although we don't anticipate that happening forever. So we still have to work out the, the deal with Warrington, but we're going to be providing most of that water and it does add for the resiliency. So that answers your question.
I would just add that that's something that we are required to show as part of the application to the state is, is having proper, proper infrastructure for the proposed development. Also, we have to look at traffic impacts. So how many trips per day are generated? So there's a whole host of requirements that will be done as part of the application in the report to the state that actually will be, you all, we will all see if we get to the point where we come to a public hearing to actually complete this swap.
Thank you. Ms. Cameron's other concerns were around the Thank you. Um, uh, Ms. Cameron's other concerns were around the environment, and, um, we've been speaking here about, um, quite a lot about riparian and wetland protection as part of our comprehensive planning update. Does Gearheart have, um, riparian and wetland setbacks that would protect Neocoxie Creek and associated wetlands at this site?
Yes, Commissioner Gardner, we do. We have a riparian area specifically for the Neocoxie Creek. And it is absolutely no structures within 50 feet of the mean wide, uh, wide, uh, excuse me, mean high tide, uh, on that particular creek. So that would be put into place, and, and that's how we also protect, uh, the Neocoxie Creek within Gearheart.
Do you have, um, like riparian vegetation protections as well, or just no structures?
No structures. Uh, you can remove vegetation if it's noxious, but it needs to be replaced with native vegetation. Tree trimming can be done, uh, for the health of the tree, but trees can't be removed. So there's a lot of protections uh, on that to try to maintain those banks in that, uh, that wetland area.
And I believe if it's not already been done, a wetland delineation would be required as part of this development process, once, once we got down to that point. Uh, but I believe they've already looked at that based on the mapping I've seen.
Um, Ms. Cameron also noted, uh, silver spot butterfly. I know there's been some restoration efforts, um, especially north of the site. Is there identified silver spot butterfly in this area?
Uh, I, I know they have, uh, something set aside in the neighborhood to the south in the Pine Ridge, uh, neighborhood. And they've got about maybe an acre, acre and a half that's fenced off and is grassland, uh, and it, its purpose is to invite the butterflies. Uh, I'm not sure, you know, what they've seen, um, for that, but it's one of the other reasons that, you know, some kind of park to the north of this might actually be helpful than, rather than building houses back in that area. Um, so it's a bit of a buffer zone, depending on how we develop that park. But yes, there's some butterfly habitat back in there.
Thank you. Okay, that's my last one, I promise. Um, you, she had also mentioned the carcinogen, uh, carcinogenic compounds associated with firefighting, and, um, I'll just give you my own experience with this, that, um, I know that the fire, um, you know, in training, which is incredibly important, uh, there's like, uh, a lot of burning of cars and, um, and, uh, also, uh, the spraying of the foam. It's the training foam, but it is definitely a chemical foam. And I had the experience that our fire station is actually connected to the stormwater system, and that foam ended up on the beach, in our creek and on the beach. So, um, you know, how are you gonna make sure that, if, I don't know if you've thought about this at all, but that the stormwater systems and the area that you're training your firefighters are not connected to the wetlands and creek and that that's properly, uh, retained? You know, this is down the line, but this is my moment, so.
No, thank you, Commissioner Gardner. That's a good point. Um, and just, you know, full disclosure, I've been on the Gearheart Fire Department for 25 years now. Hold a, uh, captain's rank there. We, uh, don't, you know, do, y- you have to respect your environment, and part of the environment is that it's in a residential zone. Our intention is not to create a training center where you can burn, or we're setting up conaxes, um, you know, to do certain types of training. We do have to respect that this is in the middle of a residential area, and we want to be partners in that, similar to the way we did our water treatment facility. Try to get it to blend in as much as possible, part of the environment. So there's no intention on creating any kind of, uh, live fire, uh, props or work up there. Um, car fires, gas, uh, generators, those sorts of things that help us train. We usually do those in places that are with other fire departments and more appropriate for that kind of work. So I don't think there's any, uh, in, any desire to do that. As far as the foams go, it's another reason that we're trying to work on this fire department, because, you know, cancers and all of those things are very important, and we're really taking it seriously these days. It's not just, you know, people who are smoke eaters. They're really concerned with that. So with this fire station, you know, being clean, being able to, you know, decontaminate ourselves. Uh, and, you know, we don't like to use things that are carcinogenic. So the foam is not necessarily something that we would want to play around with as well. We would only use it as an emergency. So that's kind of, uh, the way we think about it.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns or interests of the commissioners? I'm sorry, Commissioner Kwong, I was dominating. I apologize. Go ahead.
Um, yes, uh, this is come back to Commissioner Kwong. I'm wondering what are your plans for sewer, uh, and water treatment for the, uh, facility? If that's, um, I guess if that's no, in, in the immediate plan, or is that a future plan?
No, it's a, thank you, Commissioner Kwong, for the question. Uh, again, this is Chad Sweet with the City of Gearheart. Um, the entire city of Gearheart, uh, in the area around it, we are septic. Um, so all of our homes in Gearheart are septic. Uh, we, that's why, one of the reasons we have the larger lots, uh, for less density is to be able to maintain that septic system. And there's no plans to go to sewer at this point, partially because we've learned that septic systems are also very resilient in, um, major events, maybe an earthquake or tsunami, maybe, you know, a large power outage and that sort of thing. So this site would also be septic, uh, both for the homes and for the fire station. The fire station septic system would not be, um, that large as its needs are not huge, but, um, hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Missioner Powers, Krasch, are anyone else wish to ask questions? This is your time. Otherwise, we'll move on.
I can provide the PowerPoint too, so that if you all want to take a closer look at that, I will get that to you all.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate your time. Um, uh, both of you and others in the room on this issue. It's a really interesting one for us, and, um, um, we'll see what happens on May 17th.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, have a great, uh, great morning.
Thank you for your time.
You as well.
Okay, um, we're gonna move on to our four public hearings. Oh, I'm, um, let's see. Yes, we'll move on to our four public hearings. So agenda item number two. Um, this is a legislative hearing regarding revisions to Clatsop County's comprehensive plan, Goal Five, open spaces, scenic and historic areas and natural resources. Will the staff please make their report?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Uh, for the record, I'm Gail Hendrickson, Community Development Director. Uh, Goal Five is a very large and complex goal. It covers many different resource areas. And there are 15 of these areas that the state requires counties and local governments to inventory, uh, if the resource is present in the county or the local jurisdiction. Uh, for Clatsop County, we have almost all of these, uh, including riparian corridors, wetlands, wildlife corridors, uh, groundwater resources, trails, natural areas, um, and then, uh, energy sources, cultural areas. And then there's also, uh, recommended inventories that the county can also pursue, such as historic resources, open spaces, scenic views and sights. And so this very large and complex goal is kind of a catch-all for all the other items that are really not addressed in the other, uh, 18 planning goals that are applied statewide. As the county with our comp plan updates and our citizen advisory committees in the planning areas, we took about six months to go through all the different resource areas that are covered in Goal Five and put together recommendations that were then sent to the countywide planning commission. Uh, the countywide planning commission spent quite some time as well reviewing that before passing it up to the planning commission. And that occurred back in November of the 2021. And, uh, the day, literally the day before our meeting to go through Goal Five at our November Planning Commission meeting, we had comments back from Department of Land Conservation and Development. And so, uh, in agreement with the County Planning Commission, we pulled the agenda item, uh, we put those revisions together. And then the Joint Planning Commission, Countywide Citizen Advisory Committee, wanted to have additional discussion about the standard approach to wetland and riparian area protection versus the safe harbor approach, uh, to protect, protection of those resources. And so your joint committee did meet on April 26th and look at that and made some recommendations on when safe harbor should be applied versus, uh, the standard approach to, uh, inventorying and protecting those resources. So those changes, uh, from the previous countywide, uh, meetings, from the different planning area meetings, and the recommendations from your last joint meeting in April have all been incorporated into this final draft of Goal Five. Uh, you'll see that those areas have been highlighted in yellow. Uh, we've also, as staff, made the changes that have been recommended by Department of Land Conservation and Development staff. You'll see those changes have also been incorporated into your draft. And, uh, I can go through each of the different resource areas if you'd like, or if you want to just start going through the draft, uh, and making any amendments that you see fit before making your recommendation to the board. Uh, we can go that way as well. But really, I'm here just to answer any questions you might have and to assist you as you move through your review of Goal Five. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hendrickson. I think we can just kind of move through the document. You know, it was very recent that the Planning Commission and Countywide Advisory Committee got together on this topic, so I'm hoping, um, we can be pretty, um, you know, focused and efficient. Um, I want to point out to the commissioners, um, page 17 of the packet, that's the gray square in the bottom right. Um, we have, um, our action item, which is to review Goal 11 Draft Three, identify any questions we have, and then provide a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. So we can make some, um, you know, individual, uh, um, motions, and then at the end do, uh, a, a final recommendation motion. So either recommending as is, um, the, uh, the document or recommending, um, a new amended, uh, draft to the, to the commissioners. And just to be clear, um, is this our last batch today of comprehensive planning goals, except the ones that have been pulled out?
Uh, do you still have the six community plans to go through, and we would be bringing those forward in June?
Okay, so these are the last goal documents, and then we'll do the community plans. Okay, great.
Correct.
Um, so do we have any initial questions of staff, um, from the Planning Commission right now before we take public testimony? I might just ask, um, could you clarify? So when we're talking about wetlands, we're not talking about all wetlands. The Goal Five Wetlands versus the other wetlands and that are elsewhere in the document?
That's correct, Chair. So wetlands get addressed in several different places in the comprehensive plan. Uh, we have, uh, estuarine resources. We have, in Goal 16, we have coastal resources in Goal 17. And the wetland areas that are typically covered under Goal Five are usually more of the freshwater, uh, wetlands that you would see, not, that would be outside the, uh, policies that are in Goals 16 and 17.
So non-title, non-beach wetlands. Um, okay, I'm seeing no additional questions. I'll go ahead and move on to public testimony. This hearing is open for public testimony. All speakers on the floor are to state their name and address before speaking. If you're, uh, appearing in a representative capacity, please identify who you're representing and limit your remarks to two minutes to present all, to permit all present, uh, the ability to speak. Do we have anyone who is interested in speaking today? Hearing none. Public testimony is now closed and discussion is open for Planning Commissioner members, Planning Commission members. If, uh, we might just start maybe together walking through the document, um, on page 18 with, um, the beginning of statewide planning goal number five, we have the overview section. So let's just go ahead and walk through that. Do we have any questions, comments, um, motions of amendments in that overview or historical perspective sections? Realizing I can't see, oh yeah. I'm scrolling down here through the tables to, um, current conditions. Um, I just wanted to make a couple comments on this first section if no one else wants to talk about it. I just, um, feel like we've spent a lot of time talking about, um, you know, the importance of inventorying and, um, developing a protection plan for definitely our significant riparian areas and, and Goal Five wetlands, but also our just generally wetlands and riparian areas. Um, and I, I, I was really interested in, um, on page 30, um, the note that local governments can, can be held liable under the Endangered Species Act if permits issued by that local government result in the killing and harming of listed species. And, um, and then that connects to the discussion on page 54 of the BIOP, um, the biological opinion and, and how coming down from the federal government is the interest in, um, in, uh, encouraging or discouraging development that impacts, um, lift, listed species. And, um, I just want to know that there's 18 listed salmon, steelhead and other species you look on, um, on the Columbia River. And so all the riparian areas and wetlands that are connected to the Columbia will be affected by that biological, uh, opinion. And also make the county liable for, um, allowing development that might impact the, especially the juvenile, uh, salmon, salmon and steelhead, um, populations there. And then along the coast, um, the Canicum and some of the larger, um, the Akola and Arch Cape Creek all host, um, coastal Coho, um, which is also a listed ESA species. So, um, so those may apply there. And, um, so I think, I feel like the county is moving towards protecting, you know, especially some of those significant wetlands, um, outlined in the updated Duncan Report, but we may be forced sooner than later to, to be more comprehensive about our inventory and, um, inventory and protection policies in the county. Um, and I think, I think we're making progress towards that in this comprehensive plan, but, um, you know, it's just taken so long. It's, you know, the entire time I've lived here, we've been talking about this, and 20 years later, um, we don't have comprehensive riparian and wetland protections in the county, so uh, it worries me. Commissioner Farrar.
Uh, yes, I, on that point, um, I wanted to ask, uh, Director Hendrickson if she could help by pointing out if there is a policy, because there are many policies to do with this particular goal, and I've kind of lost track whether there's something in there in the policies um, that do address that point about the protection of wetlands. To be, uh, in compliance with the Endangered Species Act, um, that it seems to me if there is the possibility of, um, a financial cost to the county, there, there should be something fairly specific in the policies that recognizes that regardless of what decision is ultimately made on any particular thing. Okay, so you're bringing up now. Yeah, I, I know there's a lot of policies here and it's probably covered. I was just curious whether there was something actually pointing out the importance of the avoidance of getting unnecessarily sued. May, maybe that's something that Commissioner Maybe that's something that Commissioner Orr would be more well-versed on to address my question, but I just think it's something that is important enough that there should be something really rather specific about it, but I I found all this to go through rather daunting and I've been distracted by the the details and complexity of it to the point that I've overlooked some of the maybe more important overriding concerns that I wish I had brought bear earlier in the process. But I'll just leave what I have said as a comment and not plan to make a motion for any particular change in policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrar. Maybe you can think about that a little bit. Well, I'm going to go back and just make sure everybody has, does everybody have their questions answered, their comments made? Any proposed changes presented on the narrative? So that's going up to page, well, fifty-three, a little bit on a fifty-four. But any final suggested edits or questions on that stuff? We could just really focus on the objectives and policies today. All right, hearing none. So page fifty-four is the beginning of the objectives and policies. We're starting with the section on climate change. Riparian corridors. And wetlands. I'll point out that, you know, on policy I under riparian areas was what we worked on quite a lot. Oh, we've got Commissioner Farrar at our last meeting. Go ahead, Commissioner Farrar.
Yeah, there's quite a number of policies here, so I don't know if anybody has something earlier, but I was looking at just primarily the changes that are highlighted in yellow. And I think the first one there under wetlands is policy O. And I like the fact that we've got that in there to to rely on the Crest Wetlands Report. I found that a very helpful report, but I, I feel there's no reason really to strike out the last sentence of that highlighted portion of policy O, where it says, "The county shall explore adopting the Arch Cape Cove Beach local wetland inventory and going through the appropriate goal five process." The the wetland survey or inventory has been completed. And, you know, it's focused on relatively small area, so it's more detailed. It's more accurate than just some overview kind of approach. And I think that it's worth recognizing it as a starting point in identifying what is a wetland and what isn't, what protection should be given to that. So I would be in favor of removing the strikeout and leaving that last sentence in. And I hereby move to do just that, to include in policy O that last sentence.
Thank you. So we have a motion to unstrike. The county shall explore adopting the Arch Cape Beach, Arch Cape Cove Beach local wetland inventory and going through the appropriate goal five process, ESE or safe harbor. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
We have a second from Commissioner Orr. Thank you. Discussion? I'll just note as Commissioner Farrar said, that it's a small area, but it's been, the local, it's the only place that the local wetland inventory has been done in the county. And it was done funded by grants and the Watershed Council and a community effort, the Community Club. It has been adopted by the Department of State Lands as appropriately done. And any development, I would also have to get a developers would have to get a local wetland inventory if it indicated that there was a local, that there were wetlands on your site. So it doesn't have to be perfect. It just has to be better than the national or the statewide. And I definitely think it does. I also think Arch Cape and Cove Beach, for the most part, really supports protection of our wetlands and riparian areas. So it's in some areas, that's not the case, but it's been in the comprehensive plan, the Southwest Community Plan since the seventies, that they wanted riparian buffers and wetland buffers and protection of their hydrology. And so it makes sense to me that the county moves forward with that. You know, again, as low hanging fruit, just like the Duncan report was low hanging fruit. So it's also kind of small, so it's not as hard as, you know, I think we had talked about doing, you know, the standard approach the entire, throughout the entire county. Of course, that's very expensive and takes a lot of time. So these two pieces that are already mostly there make sense in moving this stuff forward. Finally, there's listed Coho in Arch Cape, so that might also be good. So any other discussion or comments? Go ahead and vote on that proposed amendment.
Chair, if I could just give a little background, so that was, that policy was originally included in goal five at your April twenty-sixth meeting. The policy was deleted and then it was replaced with the policy language that was voted on. That's in your draft today. So this was actually a change that you had made back on April twenty-sixth with the Joint Committee to remove that language.
Yes, and I think I've thought it over and I think it's worth actually keeping that specificity about that, since we have the specificity about the other report. Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Let's go ahead and do a roll call vote on this one.
Commissioner Crash Hour?
No.
Commissioner Farrar?
Aye.
Commissioner Orr?
Aye.
Commissioner Kwong?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Commissioner Powers? Chair Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Powers, maybe?
Yeah, sorry, technically, no.
Okay, no, okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have three noes and four yeses. The motion passes. Thank you. I'm all right. Commissioner Farrar, did you have any other suggested changes to this, these policies here? Or any other questions or concerns or suggested changes from other commissioners?
Well, should we step through kind of by heading, like I see the next one coming up, Wildlife Habitat? Maybe if we just identified the headings, we could do it that way.
Okay, so we're through riparian, we're through wetlands. Now we're on to riparian habitat, page fifty-eight. Then we're moving on to federal wild and scenic rivers. We have none, so that one's easy. So far, anyway, state scenic waterways, talking about the Nahalum. It seems like there's still some process. On page sixty-one, the next one is groundwater resources. And I think to be consistent, I would suggest, and I wouldn't think this would be something that would need to be voted on, but that groundwater resources just be renamed groundwater and surface water resources to be more descriptive of the policies below it. That'd be called Jermaine. What do you think about that, Director Hendrickson? Was that something that we would need to vote on?
I don't think that you would need to vote on that, no.
Okay, if there's no objection to that, that would be, I think that would be more clear, more clear. Not sure why the state just pays more attention to groundwater than surface water, but in their language.
I think that's a good change since surface water is really our primary source of water around the county right now for drinking.
Set to your heart. Okay, and then a lot of wells, of course, out on twenty-six and others too, but okay, that's groundwater. Any other comments underground water? And groundwater and surface water, sorry. Oregon recreational trails. Natural areas. Under natural areas, policy E. One thing I've been thinking about is loss of access to, well, natural areas, but especially to waters. And so I just wanted to be clear that street vacations, I think, we talk about this in a couple of different places in here, that beach, river and lake access, I think we did this in other sections of the comp plan, be considered also on vacations, like, so if you're vacating a road that ends, you know, in a lake or river or ocean where there's public recreation, that that not be lost? I think, how do people feel about that? So policy E on page sixty-four. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Farrar.
No, I just raised my hand. I guess on policy E, I'm reading that through here again. And you know, when you, when you end a policy with the parenthetic and a list of items and then an et cetera, it's kind of vague in a way, but then again, I guess it leaves it open to to an interpretation that might be appropriate at the time. So I agree that when street vacations are made, there should be a consideration of a whole lot of things as far as historic uses of that particular access to get to things. And this policy comes under natural areas. So is that essentially saying that any natural area that was accessed before that street vacation was entertained are important to leave accessible by that route for the public? How should that policy E actually be interpreted if, if say a vacation was branded to someone that then would block public access?
Director Hendrickson, what is the current, like, processed? Is, are any of those things considered as criteria for street vacations?
They're, they're not checklist type of criteria, but when a street vacation comes in, first of all, there's a pre-application meeting between the county surveyor, public works, community development staff to really talk about what the purpose of the vacation is and to identify any issues with it. Again, we don't sit down with this list that's in goal five and say, emergency evacuation route, check, green belts, check, trails, check, natural areas, check. But we do try to consider how vacating a public right of way may impact adjoining property owners or access to public property. In the time that I've been here, we really haven't had a street vacation come in that I can remember that would have vacated a right of way that would have voided at public access to a public land. We have had people requesting to vacate some of the street ends that are adjacent to the ocean. And we've generally pointed out that you have to provide the access. So if it's not in this public right of way, there's going to be another public easement that's going to have to be created to make that trade off. And usually that discourages people from wanting to vacate the right of way. So I know that's not a complete answer to your question. And so I guess the short answer is no, we do not have a checklist.
Well, I guess as I read it in your discussion, then it, it does seem as though the public wouldn't just get cut off of, say, their favorite fishing hole along some stream or lake for the convenience of some property owner who might well have good reason for wanting to obtain that land and control it in some way, but, but there would be a, an alternate route required to allow people to get to something historically they've used for recreational purposes. If I if I got that pretty correct in my head.
Yes, that's correct.
Isn't that just for the beach, though? Like, is it, like, I feel like there are, like, access rules around the beach, but like, what about, you know, going to the, going to a river, like going to the Lewis and Clark?
So if there were already a public access and somebody wanted to vacate that, it might not necessarily be a street, street vacation, but maybe there's some other public access, then we would want to have a replacement public access. And I think this has specifically come up perhaps in the community plans in Seaside Rural and LC Jewel area. But along the river, there was a lot of discussion about the need to require additional public access points or make sure that the public access points we have don't go away. I mean, really, it does not come up very often. I think in almost four and a half years here, I think we've done maybe three or four street vacations, right of way vacations. The last one was a series of old platted roads out in the Woloski area. And that really went to nowhere, did not connect to public lands, were just roads that were dividing people's property. And that's typically what we see as road vacations. We don't get a lot of requests and to vacate access to public lands. And usually, you know, the one that we've talked to, we've pretty much talked them out of it.
Public lands and waters, right?
Well, I include, yes, public lands and water and wetlands and riparian areas and any other type of landscape that might be a public landscape or watershed.
Yeah, I just wanted to make clear, it wasn't just like two parks, but yeah, anything that you can boat around on. Okay.
Anything available to the public?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it sounds reasonable to me. I, I you can't word these things perfectly anyway, so that addresses my question very well. Thank you very much.
I'm on mute, sorry. So aggregates, so we're doing, we did mineral resources. And then I was moving on to energy sources. And I had one question for staff on policy L. The county recognizes there's limited ag lands, but there's also a need to balance limitation for renewable energy like solar. The county shall encourage the use of small scale solar, five acre or less, that integrate grazing and ag practices, which I have nothing against absolutely, but isn't practices, which I have nothing against absolutely, but isn't there a state law around, there's a new state law that restricts solar on ag lands, isn't there?
It doesn't necessarily restrict it, but it does lay out some requirements if you're going to do it. And that was adopted maybe in twenty twenty, I think that rule went into effect.
I think it has to do with limiting them on EFU, like exclusive farm use, so like our rural, rural residential and our small but anything that's EFU, I think is really restricted. So I just, I wanted to note that.
Yeah, I don't think it's restricted because it does happen, but there are requirements about how it has to be done, so it's not prohibited.
Right, okay.
And I didn't see that in policy L, though. This is under mineral and aggregate resources.
No, sorry, I'm on policy L under energy sources. I was on mute, so I kind of lost, I lost everyone, rather. Any other questions or comments on energy sources? How about cultural areas or historic resources? Open space. Scenic views and sights. And that's the end. Are you sure, Commissioner Farrar? Okay, if we have no other questions, comments, or proposed amendments, motions for amendments, I think we can go back to our initial actions, which I'm trying to get back to. And so we just have the one amendment. I believe. So I'm looking for a motion and that the planning commission recommends the board of commissioners adopt goal five draft three as amended.
Uh, this commissioner Farrar, I, I move that the planning commission recommend the board of supervisors adopt goal five draft three as amended.
Little edit, Board of Commissioners, do we have a second? Okay, Commissioner Powers, go ahead and second, thank you for the dueling seconds. So we have a motion and a second that the planning commission recommends the board of commissioners adopt goal five draft three as amended. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. The motion passes unanimously, thank everyone. We'll move on to our second public hearing. This is a legislative hearing regarding revisions to Clatsop County Comprehensive Plan Goal Nine Economic Development. Will staff please make their report?
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Julia Decker, Planning Manager, and this is Goal Nine. And I think Director Hendrickson has the strikeout version. I have given you in your packet a cleaner version for you to look at. Hopefully it was easier to read. The strikeout version is a little busy. So the Joint Planning Commission and Countywide Advisory Committee looked at this version uh, gold of goal nine on January twenty-fifth. And then since that time, staff attended a county commission work session that included a presentation by OSUC Grant Extension Assistant Professor Amanda Gladix. And so actually, staff has made a small insertion under the marine resources section since the joint committee looked at it. So I'll be bringing that to your attention. So goal nine is to make sure cities and counties have enough land available to realize economic growth and development opportunities. Most of the plans usually are based on inventories of areas suitable for increased economic growth. As you all know, the county does not have a current one, and so there will be an addition to the goals that will address that. It's under goal two or pardon me, it's number two under general policies. We'll get there in a little bit. But one thing I wanted to make sure everybody was clear on is that the focus in goal nine for the comprehensive plan is on land use. It's, it's not every aspect of the economy of Clatsop County which is really large, it's a very large topic. And so it's, it's this all encompassing thing, so we're more focused on land use and the aspects that are, are addressed there. So on the document that I provided to you in your, in your clean version that you have, the table of the goals and policies does not address, the strikeout version does not address all the renumbering and all the relettering. There was quite a bit of it. Changes that the joint committee made are in red text. The sections that staff added, which are very minor, are in blue. And so I gave you a table of everything that you had sort of been working on as a joint committee and so the one of, on, on page one, one of the first things, the joint committee had approved adding a paragraph or adding to a paragraph, a shift of the industries and employment over time and also noting that earthquake and tsunami risk to economic development is a concern. So that actually has been added for you. It's on your page one of the document. And that's in red, and it's there in the third paragraph. So that was added by the joint committee. It wasn't the language, staff did the language, but I want to make sure that that's okay with you. The CAC and PC Joint Committee approved adding a section or a paragraph regarding the lack of affordable housing and childcare as impediments to future growth. That, there was a mention of that actually originally on page seven, but we, staff went ahead and added a line to that same section on page one. So that, that it's identified, identified there on the first page, and then it also shows up again on page seven where it was in the original draft. Staff has updated the COVID statistics. And those are probably going to keep moving, but we'll just update that until the draft is finally adopted. The joint committee approved adding discussion regarding tax instruments such as real estate tax and the other instruments, taxes, historical perspective, to the horse, historical perspective section, pardon me. Staff spoke about that with the director and determined that that actually is a taxation issue. It's not really a land use issue. So the director's instruction was to go ahead and leave that out. The joint committee requested that the tables use the same timeframe and express data citing consistency when comparing information for the same time periods. Staff really wasn't able to do that. The tables are from different sources and it's not original research. Staff is using Oregon Employment Department material and also US Census material, and they provide their their data in different sections or different formats, and so staff using their data is using their tables. So staff did not have time to do original research and create new original tables for the, for the goal. Let's see, the joint committee approved adding climate change, including ocean acidification and hypoxia is negatively impacting these industries and will worsen over time under marine resources. Staff did add that language as a standalone, and that is under marine resources, that should be in red on your clean document. The joint committee requested that the average paid wage of retail trade employees in the section under retail trade be clarified as to whether the figure is mean or median. Staff did follow back and find that that was the referred to the average income, not as the median or the middle range, but it is been inserted as mean for everybody who was interested in that. The joint committee requested that the median sales price over time be included in the narrative regarding housing prices under the heading attracting workers. So staff did go to the two thousand nineteen Clatsop County Housing Trends and Needs Appendix A, which had the time period from two thousand ten to two thousand eighteen and included that in the narrative, and this was the timeframe that was available from what staff considered to be a reliable resource. One thing staff would tell everybody is there's a lot of different documentation out there and numbers shift all the time month to month as new documents become available. So the sometimes not all the figures agree with each other, and it's sort of like when you find a note at the bottom of a table that says add, numbers do not add due to rounding, it's a little bit similar to that. Timeframes change and new data is available, and so sometimes you will see that some, some figures change. So anyway, that is one that might shift around a little bit, but staff found that the Housing Trends and Needs Appendix was probably the best reliable source for data. Let's see, the joint committee requested workforce housing is a major issue in Clatsop County. Basically, some, some added language. Staff did add some language regarding the Merwin, which was completed in the spring of twenty twenty-one. Staff looked at the Heritage Square project that was also suggested as something that might be included and found that that seems to be in a state of flux. So the language that was requested to be included has been added under the housing section, but the housing section is very brief, really, in goal nine. It's more of just a quick overview, says a few things, and then it really refers you to goal ten where housing is the topic. So there's not a lot of time spent in goal nine on it, it's just, it's mentioned, really. Under goals and policies and general policies, the group had changed the word flood to natural and staff made that revision. Also adding S to hazards as there are multiple types of hazards, and it appeared the committee's intent was to broaden the reference. Let's see, under policies, general policies, and the group added policy five that the county should implement the recommendations from the Housing Strategies Report of January two thousand nineteen and shall pursue immediate or short-term actions that could improve the availability of affordable housing in the county, and that is done. Under policies, general policies, the group added policy six. Businesses, especially startups and those businesses that will diversify the county's economy, should be encouraged and supported. That is done. Under product policies, one, the group revised the policy to read the Forest Practices Act regulates forestry practices. Deleting forestation and reforestation in the county's forest lands is encouraged. So that is done, that should be under forest products. The group also requested that staff review the joint committee's previous work from the last year to assure that there are no conflicts with the concepts that they had listed below in goal nine forest products policies three B, and there, there were three of them there. It was not explicitly stated in the meeting, but staff understood the committee to be referring to goal four, which was reviewed the previous year. So staff did review goal four draft three as requested and found no conflicts in the language. Same thing with policies three C to include such as cross laminated timber and to have staff verify that there was no conflicts with adding the language regarding cross laminated timber. And so the language was added and there are no conflicts, staff found no conflicts with goal four. And let's see, the joint committee approved the leading D. Clatsop County encourages legislators to consider development of local options for marginal farm and forest lands when lands zoned for farm and forestry are not productive for their zoned uses. Which had been recommended by the Clatsop County Fair Board. Okay, that has been removed from the clean draft. And staff is wanting to make caveat to you that the Board of County Commissioners had reviewed that language, which had been forwarded to them through this, through a previous draft to, from the fair board. And so staff will be pointing out to the Board of Commissioners, which has already reviewed that language and at least three commissioners approved it, not in a formal manner, but in a work session agreeing that that was an important consideration. So just to make sure that your committee is not blindsided, staff will be pointing out to them that it was removed. So don't, I don't want anybody to be offended, but that will be pointed out. The joint committee approved revising the former policy three F to policy two and rewording it to Clatsop County will support scientific research, including regarding ocean acidification, hypoxia, and demoic acid impacts to fisheries. That is done. The committee approved revising policy three B to read or adding and recognize the importance of freshwater habitat, again, done. The committee approved revising policy four to read fishing and maritime commerce contribute significantly to the county's economy, the potential effects and impacts, both harmful and beneficial of wind or wave energy proposals on ocean fisheries and maritime commerce shall be evaluated and considered when designing, locating, and permitting these facilities. The county shall consult with the Oregon, or pardon me, shall consult the Oregon Territorial Sea Act and the OSU PAC Wave Project to, to provide input on the effect of wind or wave energy proposals on fishing and maritime commerce. Okay, that language is added. Under human resource policies, the committee approved adding a new policy to read the county shall work with partners to support employers providing family wage jobs. That is done. Under commercial resources policies, the committee approved revising policy one to read Clatsop County shall continue to delegate economic development processes to Cedar and the Columbia Pacific Economic Development District, also known as Coal PAC. That is done. The PC requested, or pardon me, the joint committee requested subpolicies under four be consistent with the entire document. That had to do with formatting, that's done. And finally, the group approved deleting the previous policy five, which was in order to make major industrial development possible, local governments and the port and state and federal agencies shall work together. And so that is done. So actually, in your draft, then the red is the previous committee work, the blue is either a link to a website or the tables, let's see, anything that staff has added is in blue. Let's see. In the previous committee, there was some discussion regarding the Coast Guard, and which is the Department of Transportation. And the fact that the Coast Guard is not mentioned here, nor neither is Camp Rylea, which is Department of Defense. This really focuses, goal nine really focuses on land use and civilian population employment, and neither of those two are civilian. And both are actually fairly static in terms of their employment base. People transfer in or out, for example, Coast Guard. I mean, there's a certain number of ships, they're here, there's the air force, the airbase, that's here, there's a certain number of staff and the population really doesn't change much. So anyway, you, your committee, your previous committee discussed it, but there wasn't actually a conclusion that staff was aware of, but I did want to mention it, just in case you were still considering it. The another concern that came up was the order in which the topics are discussed. So forestry and marine products were the leading ones. leading ones. And followed by arts and entertainment and basically the visitor industry and then other other topics and was not sure if you wanted to change the order, staff did a sort of a historical perspective on it. So the three historical ones, the the older ones, the marine industries, the forestry, followed by the visitor industry and then the others after that. But I mean, if there's a different order that you want, certainly we can do that. Alphabetical, it's it's whatever you like. If you want to change that. The language that staff added under Marine Resources is actually on your packet page eighty-six. And one of the things that staff did was add the presentation materials to your packet and also those will become background materials to the report. Just as the Port of Astoria's materials are background to your report to Goal Nine. So all of those different documents will be added in there. We'll do Ms. Gladex's presentations and PowerPoint as as links so that this is not actually printed out in the future. But anyway, she she provided some really excellent information and it's very, very new information. Not all of these topics have new information in them, but that one was. So we have arts and entertainment and recreation and food services, and that's your visitor industry. Covers a lot of things. One of the things that was discussed was whether there should be a special section on breweries. Did not have clear direction from the previous committee. One of the committee members was suggesting adding it, provided some language, but that committee function is in a very, very formal manner, and I did not find anything that specifically was a motion and a second and an approval to add the language. Education, healthcare, social assistance is an up and coming corner of the of Goal Nine. It's actually got family wage jobs and so that's that's an important one that's that's coming in. It's been growing for probably fifteen years and I have not actually seen it ever called out in any of the Oregon Employment Departments. They don't really do projections. They sort of trend and project growth, but it's not where they decide to make a projection like this is going to be your industry ten years from now, you will see this blossom and this will this will become your major industry. That that isn't how employment projecting works. They are looking at trends for where you see small amounts of growth or larger amounts of growth if it happens, but it does not happen in Clatseton County. Our population change is much smaller than that. It's less than one percent per year. So you won't see major growth in any industry. Retail trade didn't add any language there other than to make sure that everyone understood it was the mean for retail trade employed number of people and the average or mean wage. So attracting workers added a little bit of language there to direct people to Goal Ten for housing. Let's see. Talked about partnerships. And we have many, the county has many. On page ninety-one, added some more language that was recommended by the committee regarding the Merwin. And as I stated, we left out Heritage Square. But this is the language that was actually suggested. If you want to tweak this a little bit more regarding Heritage Square, that's a distinct possibility. That's on page ninety-one. And I think under Policies, wanted to draw your attention on page ninety-four. General Policies Five and Six were to that your committee added under Forest Products Policies, number one, your committee added. And then we had some tweaks with the language on page ninety-five. For especially, we added under Marine Resources Policy Two. And the rest of it, I mean, there's just mostly some tweaks in language. I was going to see if there was not actually adding any other policies. So that covers pretty much the work that was done since January. And staff is happy to ask, answer any questions that you might ask or see if you have any comments or suggestions.
Thank you, Ms. Decker. Do we have any initial questions from the planning commissioners on the staff report before we call for public comment, Commissioner Farrar?
I just wanted clarify what this goal really intends to do. It's and whether I'm correct in assuming that it pertains to unincorporated areas of the county. When you get down to specific things that the county might have a policy on. But that certainly it's recognized a great deal of economic activity takes place within our five cities. And so there may be policy things that the county would would logically want to do in coordinating and in encouraging cities to do certain things that look like it would benefit the county as a whole. But am I correct in that that the economic activity that takes place inside city boundaries is is more the purview of of the cities to work on specific things. And an example of that might be the discussion around breweries. There certainly could be a brewery on county land somewhere, but for the most part, I'm think I'm correct that they're almost all within city boundaries and they're a big deal there. But the cities deal with that. And so we don't really need that in the comp plan. If you could just kind of add a little, a few points to that to just clarify for me what I'm getting at, the difference between the county's view on economic growth and issues versus the cities.
So the county's the county's Goal Nine actually is quite simple. It's to diversify and improve the economy of the state and Clatseton County. And again, mostly it regards the county's land use, where the county is focused. But the county has many partners and that includes each of the cities. And so lots of times you will find that the committees are seeking support, whether it's political or some other type for economic activities within the cities, whether it's housing or I mean, there's so many different possibilities, but one of the things, if you take a look at I think one of the very first under general policies. Let's see. We had talked about in number two, the county's buildable lands inventory shall be updated and constraints to development such as natural hazards and wetlands shall be identified. Telecommunications is critical component. That's countywide that that supports the cities. Mostly, and actually, I think number one was one of the things that the Board of Commissioners was interested in is recognizing it may be advantageous for Clatseton County to explore economic opportunities. Analysis consistent with OAR six sixty, zero zero nine, zero zero one five. In cooperation with the cities, the Port of Astoria and other economic partners, the Board of Clatseton County Commissioners may consider convening a countywide economic developments summit with other stakeholders, including businesses and development companies and communities to assess the current situation and identify ways forward. And then there was a sub under that. So these are partnerships. And so on the one hand, it's the county looking at land use and saying, you know, we don't really have much in the rural areas in the way of lands zoned light industrial, for example. But it's also the partnerships and supporting the Port of Astoria and supporting and doing what's appropriate to assist the Port of Astoria, yeah, the Port of Astoria, for example, the airport, any of the cities. So I don't think I've answered your question, but I probably need a little more information to be able to answer it. But have I started in the right direction?
Yeah, it 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 kind of confirms what I think I was trying to get across and didn't say very well that the a lot of the economic activity is within the cities and the county can coordinate and try to help the cities take advantage of certain things that may be available on a regional level or a state level. And that's that's appropriate. But to get into the specifics of what goes on there is probably outside of what the county typically would do. They mainly want to make sure that the land that's in unincorporated areas is there's an inventory that's appropriate with potential activities that might be conducted on those lands. And the cities have to deal with that inside their urban growth boundaries and the county only could cooperate with that and maybe try to facilitate. And so I think it it's the reason that when you start looking at the policies, there's some good general ones there, which I like. But then it focuses on forest products, which is mostly on county land. And marine resources, which again is mostly county kind of stuff. It's not inside a city boundary. And and then these other industries that are important overall to our economic output. It's less land specific to unincorporated areas, hospitals and all that medical stuff that's developed that's so important and provides a lot of really good paying jobs in the community college and things like that. They're on city within urban growth boundaries and and that's where that economic activity is taking place. Anyway, I've talked about it long enough. I I guess I'm saying I kind of agree with the way this section's put together. But I do hope that the the section on policies gets put in a format more consistent with the other goals that we've done up to this point with the the highlighting in the policies by letter rather than the number, just to make it consistent so that overall it fits into the overall comprehensive plan.
Let's get into the comments on the policies and formatting and all that stuff after the public hearing and just do questions at this point for staff before we do the public hearing. I saw Commissioner Powers, you had your your hand briefly up. Do you still have a question for staff?
Well, I may have, and you could tell me this is not appropriate, but I was thinking about transportation. I know we're not into roads and stuff and we got to focus in on land use, but when it comes to economy, has the county considered partnering with the Sunset Empire Transportation District in this area?
The county has in the past, when actually the Sunset Empire Transportation District was first getting started, I'm trying to remember when that was. It was in the nineties. And the county was a partner. I'm not really Goal Twelve is is actually not on the table today. So transportation obviously affects the economy. But it has not really been addressed in Goal Nine in the past. It has been addressed in Goal Twelve. And SETD, Sunset Empire Transportation District is much newer than Goal Nine. So if you wanted to make some sort of reference to it and get people to Goal Twelve, that's a possibility.
Okay, thank you. I'll think about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good question, Commissioner Powers. Anyone else have initial questions for staff or comments before we open the public hearing? Okay. This hearing is open for public testimony. All speakers from the floor are to state their name and address for speaking. If you're appearing in a representative capacity, identify who you represent, please. And limit your comments to two minutes. Anyone interested in speaking on Goal Nine Economic Development today? I think we're down to just one other, one member of the public in the room. Okay, hearing non-public testimony is now closed. Discussion is open for Planning Commission members. So what we're looking to do today, just like the last hearing is we'll walk through the document starting on page eighty-one with the narrative, the overview narrative. If we have proposed amendments, we'll make them along the way as we walk through the document and then we'll take a final motion at the end that will be the Planning Commission recommending the adoption of this goal, this draft as either submitted or as amended, depending on what we do on our way there. So and any initial comments, questions on the narrative, starting at page eighty-one and the overview? And the historical perspective? I'll just say, I understand Commissioner Farrar's points on you know, what's in the city and what's in the county. I think sometimes it all happens everywhere. But it all is connected, right? And Commissioner Powers' comment around transportation shows one of the main ways, you know, housing of workers. How do we get here and there, whether it be the workforce or trucks hauling timber or or other goods to our big box stores? I really like how this has evolved over time because I think the first time we saw this, it was really focused on kind of a historical perspective on what the county, you know, county used to be, I think, like in terms of of employment and in terms of income. It used to be, you know, very not as diversified as today, I'll say. So it was really focused on forestry and on on seafood. And I think this this upgraded, this edited document really shows the breadth of all the different industries that exist and and gives some good statistics on who employs and who brings in the bucks and how it all works together. I still think the emphasis on the marine and forestry is interesting, but I'm fine with the way that it's kind of turned out. Yeah. As we walk through, I'll just do my final comment here. I just, I it's kind of hard. So I I live in a place that's like fully, I mean, I have, we have forestry east of us, of course, because eighty-five percent of the county is in forest land use. But it's, you know, in terms of the people, it's dominated by the the visitor industry. And I hear a lot about how tourism is doesn't have as much value and and I hear that because I think, you know, uni, good union, family wage jobs are what our families need. But I will say that you know, they're small businesses and they do employ and they maybe don't pay as much or have benefits, some of them. But we we do have a lot of managers in our community and those people get paid really well and have benefits, a lot of them. And then we have a lot of small business owners and many of them do really well. And those people are spending their money in the local communities. And so because there are so many of them, I think they do definitely have a multiplier effect that's under recognized when people talk about you know, the impact of the of the visitor industry, as it's called in this document. You know, it's amazing how much you can make slinging crepes in a tourist town. Or worse, coffee. But anyway, those are just my comments. I think otherwise the narrative feels okay to me. Anybody have other, as we walk through the narrative, comments or questions? Oh, I see. Sorry, Commissioner Crusher, please.
Yeah, I I may have missed it, but I'm going through some of this stuff and and I'm looking at the graph on page eighty-three and we spent a lot of time in this, you know, talking about forestry and fishing and some of the arts and stuff and maybe I'm biased to construction, but if you look at construction, it's double what fishing maybe I'm biased to construction, but if you look at construction, it's double what fishing and forestry are. And that's not including all the people that come here from out of town to work because there are an absurd amount of people coming here from Beaverton Hillsborough, Vancouver, Portland area subcontractors to work. And I I would, I would beg to say that that percentage would at least double for the amount of out of town companies that are come here, whether they're business licenses or not. There's a lot of them coming to town. But we don't even mention it in here unless I missed it. I just looked through it three or four times again, but we don't even mention construction and and in the midst of all the housing crisis. You know, it would be nice to see if we had some representation there because we need more people here that want to come here. And I think we need to encourage you know, the growth of of construction workers in this county. It's it's no it's not going to get any better. It's we're only going to have a need for more people. The more growth we have, especially in the warranty area, we keep bringing bigger box stores in, more restaurants. More businesses that need employees, they're going to need housing, they're going to need the apartments, whatever it is that we're going to do for for housing. But to me, I don't feel like construction has any representation in here. That's just.
Thank you. Great point, Commissioner Crusher. Ms. Decker, did you consider adding a section or would you consider adding a section in the narrative discussing the construction trade? I see page 83 that you know, and this is probably not even, it's outdated considering how crazy the construction industry is right now. Is actually quite a bit larger than agriculture, forestry, fishing and mining combined, twice as much.
Well, Chair Gardner, staff can take a look at what might be available, maybe through the Oregon Employment Department's website for information on the construction industry, the that particular set of trades. And see if there's something to be added, some some language similar to to the way that we've done. Oh. Looking maybe similar to the way that we've done the visitor industry paragraph. See if there's some information available there.
Um, yeah, so maybe if we're interested in that as a group, maybe we could make a motion. Jason, would you like to make a motion? You know, that staff use their discretion to add a section on the construction trades to the narrative?
Yeah, I I would. I just, like I said, I would like to see it represent represented. You know, a lot of the a lot of the the commercial fishermen, you know, they they work jobs in construction as well. I mean, I I employ several that have both. They do in the off season, they're in construction and the on season they're fishing or crabbing or or whatever season it is. I just, I think that if you if you look around our county, construction is a huge, huge part of our economy here. And it employs hundreds of people, if not thousands. I mean, there's there's a lot of people. So I I just think that if they could do a better job in representing some of the larger industries around here. So yeah, I'd like to make a motion that the the staff would, at their discretion, add similar to the marine resources or the the forestry and wood products titles, a a construction title with with the descriptions, much like the rest of them, just outlining construction in in our county.
Thank you. Do we have a second of that for that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have our our fishermen and construction commissioner down there representing, seconding that motion. Any discussion?
It's like that I've heard figures that every new home that's built is equivalent to four full-time family wage jobs. And I don't know if I can, if the Home Builders Association or some of these other groups would have some more of those figures out there, but the contribution in of construction as a whole in the county is certainly significant and worth noting.
Yes, indeed. Commissioner Farrar?
Yeah, I had a couple of comments there. I I agree that you know, when you look at forestry and fishing, it it seems that when you look at the historical record of of incomes to people participating in that and in the total output, economic output of those. They they haven't changed that much in in real dollars. They're they they've kind of hit somewhat of a jagged plateau, if you will. And the potential for them expanding a lot isn't isn't as great as you might have thought years back. And that the numbers of people employed, if anything, seem to be going down slightly because the technology improves and fewer people are needed to carry out that work. So I agree that other things such as construction, but I'd also put in there manufacturing are ha- have more potential for expanding workforce jobs. And it is appropriate to mention that and discuss it. But again, I go back to the idea that the the county's role in the economy is to make sure there's enough land around to do these things. And less about trying to encourage one particular industry over another, as I see it. Now, I do think that and maybe Cedar takes this on or some other organization does, there should be a lot more economic planning for the county. But I'm not sure the comp plan is the place to to really do a lot of that, but I I would certainly support adding a section for manufacturing, for construction, but I would I would ask that maybe it be construction and manufacturing together. But if you don't like that idea and want to focus on construction, I'll support that too. So that's my take on it.
Um. Okay, uh, we could amend the original motion if Commissioner Crusher is amenable to also add us either in the, you know, to to staff's discretion, adding manufacturing to that section or another section, just to be more you know, to pay more attention to important trades sectors in our economy. But it's up to you, so.
I I would, I would, I would think that if if anything, I would like to keep them separate, but but I would not be opposed to adding them both as well. I know that when when I look for for expansion and when I look into other areas of of possible growth for myself and my company, I go to the county. I don't go to individual cities. I go to the county and I see what what is striving in those counties. I I agree that, you know, healthcare and all that stuff is is within the city limits, but it's also within our county. So we we as a county are putting this out there saying, hey, what is our county doing? Those cities are all within our county and, you know, manufacturing is 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 huge. Construction is 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 ginormous here. I mean, it is. I don't I don't even know how to get the appropriate numbers, but I I would I would beg to to argue with somebody that said it's not one of the top employment in in the county here right now. And in bringing in all the people from out of town, I mean, there's, there's a lot. You can drive from one end of the county to the other and count probably at least 100 different trucks from that don't belong in the county that are here working. So I I would, I would like to leave it construction, but but I'm not opposed. I would be 100% for someone want to make a a motion. I don't know if we have a motion within a motion, but we have to vote or.
Let's just keep it simple and let's just vote on this motion. And if if Commissioner Farrar wants to just do a quick one on on manufacturing, we could just add, do a separate one. So let's let's go ahead and vote if people are ready. So all those in favor of the motion on the table, which is to to for staff to create and at their discretion to develop a section on the construction sector. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Farrar, did you want to add a motion around manufacturing or should we move on?
Well. You know, you could make a case for all these things with longer lines, longer blue lines on the graph. And I don't want to go there. So let's just leave it as it is.
Okay, let's leave it. And then staff could make suggestions and do it on the county commission level if if that is of interest to them. Okay. Let's see. So we're on page 83. We're making our way through the narrative section. Any questions or comments on marine, arts, entertainment, education? Retail? I think most of them are actually covered from that list. And then we have that new discussion of attracting workers and housing and partners. It's like people are pretty comfortable with the narrative otherwise. Is that right? Commissioner Farrar?
Well, I'm not sure if we're quite there yet. It seems like maybe we are. I I'd go back to that new paragraph that was added. It's on packet page 91. And it's right before the policies, I believe. But anyway, it's 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 the part to do with Astoria's housing situation and their recent Merwin project. Which is good. I like that write-up, but I was just going to suggest tweaking what you have written there about the Heritage Square project and just make it more generic that that something's you know, they're looking at a number of options there, but it it doesn't look like right now, from what I understand, it's very likely that there's going to be a whole lot of workforce housing there. It's very unclear exactly what it will be. So rather than put out you know, a number of units as shown there and and things like that. Maybe just say that that's another block of land within a urban growth boundary that's being looked at for a number of different purposes that might help with the housing space. I don't know. It just I know it's difficult because we're trying to, we're trying to make this document up to date. But things change so quickly that it's it's hard to make it correct for all time. So I'd I'd just make it more general if possible, just suggestion, not a motion.
Okay, I was going to make a motion here, Christopher Farrar. So what I might suggest is that you move that staff updates the language regarding Heritage Square under city partners Astoria. And leave it to their discretion to say like, you could say something like as of 2022, the city of Astoria is exploring affordable housing options. You know, keep it more general. How about that? Something like that?
It's sounds good. I wish I could have just said that.
My my job is to try to try to help you here. So if if you'd like to make that motion, it's up to you, though.
All right, can I just say so moved because?
Okay, so Commissioner Farrar is moving that staff update the city of Astoria Heritage Square language to be more general.
A second.
Okay, Commissioner Orr, seconds. And all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Sorry, I skipped the discussion part. Is anybody make any like to make any discussion, like to make any comments on that? All right, any in any opposed? All right, so I think that's a unanimous approval of that that edit. Sorry. Ms. Decker, did I get, was that too quick?
No, I just wanted to verify so that I understand what it is that you're after. Because the language that is inserted there did come word for word from what was moved and seconded from the previous committee work. So the Heritage Square has evolved in the last couple of months, so I want to make sure that I understand. Do we want to take out a lot of this language or just tweak the part about Heritage Square? Do we want to speak in more general terms on the whole thing? Do we want to leave the Merwin part in or how? I just want to do it right.
Yeah, I think so. I think it's those, that language that you have highlighted there, the city of Astoria is entering because that's not true anymore.
Okay.
And so, but I do think, I mean, Commissioner Farrar, those of you who live in Astoria following it more closely than I, but.
I I think the Merwin part's just fine. It's a good point that it shows that this actually works, that something was actually done. And at Heritage Square, maybe there's some potential and just not get into the specifics of of the the price range in percent of of annual incomes and that kind of thing because that's, as you say, it's in a state of flux, but so just make it clear that it's it's got potential, but we don't know exactly how it's going to play out.
Do you feel comfortable with that with Ms. Decker? Would you rather us like actually wordsmith it?
No, that's fine. Thank you. I can do that. I just wanted to make sure I knew where I was going. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks. All right, moving our way through, we're on city partners. Commissioner Farrar, did you have any others in the narrative or anyone else?
I don't have anything else.
Okay. And now we're moving on to policies, which is on the bottom of packet page 93 or comp plan goal page 13. And I think as Commissioner Farrar had noted, this is a different format. And so I'm wondering if just as a germane edit, we could suggest that staff puts these in the same format as the other goals. Okay, Ms. Decker is indicating yes. That's fine. So we don't need to get into that. I want to know with the group, it's 12:08 right now. So in about 20 minutes, I'd like to take a half hour break and then we'll come back and if we're not finished with this goal, then we'll work on this, but then we'll have two more goals after lunch, housing and ocean resources. So here are our policies. In red are the new policies from the last meeting, the last countywide advisory committee, planning commission meeting. Any questions or comments on the policies, suggested changes, motions?
I had a question. I think we talked about this last time and I could be wrong, but on number five that's written in red, says the county should. Didn't we discuss saying shall instead of should? Or was it should instead of shall? I I'm not sure because it should doesn't mean that they will, but should means that they just, they should if they want to. Is that?
Right, so shall requires that they implement the recommendations and should gives them the opportunity to. So I think from a financial standpoint, we've been encouraged and just a capacity. If you go through these documents, oh my gosh, there's so much work to be done. So this gives some more flexibility, especially around, I think you might find that some of the recommendations are pursued and others are not as aggressively or at all being pursued by the county. So I mean, my thought is that should yeah, but do you think it should be shall? You tell us.
I was just looking for this because if you go down to under forest policies, the county shall and then down a little bit further, the county will. There's just a lot of back and forth, so.
Yeah, I noticed that too. Coming back through it again, I feel like in different times in the process, that distinction has been emphasized or not emphasized. So we ended up with like all of those. And so this is the time, this is our time to edit if we feel it's appropriate. So let me know if you have a motion on any of the wording.
Well, I'd just say in general that I I think it's good that we pick that that kind of verb in there very carefully. And I I think in the early days of this comp plan revision, we didn't, maybe some of us weren't. the early days of this comp plan revision, we, we didn't, maybe some of us weren't thinking so much about the difference between those words, we were kind of almost using them synonymously, but it seems as though the way those words are used in a complaint have great significance, and I think we went through and have been careful about that, so I was looking at that as I went through these policies and kind of went along with it, but, but there's always room for discussion on that and just how much county resources should go into guaranteeing that they're going to do something or not. It is certainly worthy of discussion, but anyway, that's my take on shall and should will.
Yeah, it's interesting, so on page ninety-four, when you look at the forestry part, number two says the county shall encourage the long-term supply, so it requires that the county do that. And then it says by doing the following, but then each of the points, A, B, and C, each says should, so. There's like a little bit of a disconnect in, in using those, that language.
The other thing that I brought up was just that goal five, the county should implement the recommendation from the housing strategies report of January two thousand nineteen and should pursue immediate short term, and it goes on, but I mean, are we not already outdated from two thousand nineteen? I mean, we're in twenty twenty-two, so I'm, should, shall, I, I, I mean, I don't even know if we have that in there, I'm, I'm newer on the commission as well, and I know that this has been going on for a long time and the, the joint committees have made these recommendations, but to me, that seems at the time that we're implementing this already, it's already outdated. And that's just where the words started coming from to me.
Yeah, the report, that's the date that the report came out, and we don't have a newer date, we don't have a newer report, so. That's the one, and actually, I think we discussed this in the housing section, that the county hasn't even adopted that report. So, but that's, yeah, that is just that it's saying that the housing strategy report that was produced in, in that year.
So if this is something that the county hasn't even adopted, why are we putting it in our comp plan that they would refer to it?
Well, yeah, you know, I'm a little, I'd be interested if, if Director Hendrickson is here, I would be interested in hearing from her, but I didn't even know. I've never, I had never heard of counties having to adopt things that the county paid for and did. Like, is that something that's always, has always happened, that the county commission has to adopt every report? Or is that, is that, yeah?
They're not required to adopt it, but if you want it to have meaning in teeth, it should be adopted. Just paying for something doesn't mean that it's adopted, it just means that you've paid somebody to do it, so for example, with the update to the strategic plan in twenty twenty, we worked with a consultant out of Portland State University and that final strategic report had to go before the board and be approved, even though they were the ones who paid, agreed to have the taxpayers pay for the consultant, they are the ones who worked on the plan with the consultant. At the end of it all, they still had to approve the final plan and adopt it for it to really have any teeth and be implementable.
Yeah, I've heard about that with like strategic plans, I just didn't, it's new to me to have a municipality have to adopt every plan that they work on, but, but it's fine, and so I think to answer your question, Commissioner Crashar, the, in the housing section, this group so far is, is, is proposing to the board of commissioners that they go ahead and adopt it, I think that's in there, isn't that right, Director Hendrickson?
No, that's not what the policy five says, it just says that we should implement the recommendations. It doesn't say adopt the report.
Oh, I mean, in the, in the housing section, I thought maybe I'm misremembering, but I thought in the housing section, we, maybe I'm mixing up reports, but.
I'd have to go back and review those policies myself.
Well, anyway, okay, Commissioner Crashar, do you have a motion around this, this policy? Where should we move?
I'm just trying to make sense of it, I mean, as for right now, I guess we just move on.
Commissioner Farrar, did you have something on this or a next?
Yeah, I had a couple of points, one is that yeah, two thousand nineteen was, you know, if you do the arithmetic, three years ago, so a lot has changed, especially in these times, but it, it's difficult to have things that are more up to date than two or three years old. The county has limited funds to carry these studies out, and I think it'd be interesting if when these studies are mentioned, we actually put a cost of what it took to get that study. And so, yeah, the county doesn't, may, may not go to the trouble of adopting the, the results, but that could be that they didn't like the result, or they thought it took the wrong course of of direction and, and what it produced, so there are reasons for that. But certainly, there's nothing wrong with putting a policy there that asks that the county take some part of that particular study and do something with it, as it is being done with this particular policy, that it should implement the recommendations, you know, blah, 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 so. That's just a general thing for all these, these policies that relate back to some study that was done, studies are necessary, but they're always going to be out of date, and the date, the data in that two thousand nineteen report is, is probably data from two thousand eighteen, seventeen, sixteen, and going back, so. Yeah, we're always scrambling to catch up to the present day, we'll, we'll never get there, I guess, but that's my, my take on the whole thing.
I, I agree with that, my, I guess my question is, is why are we even putting it in there if it's something that we're just recommending that we, you know, implement something that's outdated, I mean, this is more for discussion and, and all that with the group rather than trying to make a, a recommend or a motion right now, but does anybody else not agree with that, that why, why, why would we even put it in there? If by the time this gets passed, gets done, we're at the end of this year, it's four years old, the data is five, six years old, why, why would we even put it in there instead of leaving it out? I mean, is there a reason to have it in there rather than just strike it out and not have it? Does anybody have any thoughts on that, or if not, we just move on?
Director Hendrickson?
Yeah, so to answer your question, Commissioner, this was put in at our joint meeting with the planning commission and the countywide citizen advisory committee. Based on my recollection of this, I think it may have been put in partly in the context of limiting short-term rentals, which is one of the strategies that is recommended in the twenty nineteen housing study. And so that, that's my recollection, is, that is why that was addressed in, in this section. And it was approved unanimously, it was a motion made by Charles Dyke, seconded by Chair Gardner to add that policy in, and then there was a second follow-up motion to that by Jim Allegria, seconded by Commissioner Farrar to change shall to should, and that was also approved unanimously.
Yeah, so I don't know if you've read it, Commissioner Crashar, but there's, it's pretty, I mean, you're right, the data is now five years old, but it, we're not going to have another one of these for at least another five, if not more, years, I don't know that there's any intention to update it in the short term. And because it takes so long to implement, and, and if you look at the recommendations, which this is just talking about implementing the recommendations, they're pretty broad brush, and I think they'll, they persist over time, you know, I think housing, we're all struggling with it, not just you know, our communities here in Clatso County, but the entire state and, you know, other places in the nation as well, and the solutions are well-known and and so the strategies report, you know, definitely used our data and that's important, but it I don't think it's, I don't think its recommendations are outdated by any means, and so there's a lot of good things in there, there is information about short-term rentals, but there's a lot of other things in there too that that I think the committee wanted to make sure, just emphasize that it's an important thing in terms of this goal. Commissioner, Commissioner Farrar?
Okay, I, I, I don't want to keep going on and on about this, but I do want to say that I, I think these kind of discussions, even though they take time, are very worthwhile, I think it's important to hash through these things as, as the planning commission here, so I'm, I'm very happy that Commissioner Crowe Shower brought that up, and I would just say that some of these reports that are done, even though the data may be a few years old, sometimes the trends have a little more lasting power to them. The trends don't change all that rapidly, except in economic collapse times, which of course we seem to have about monthly these days, but there is value to these things, even if the data gets a little out of date. The, the, the trends tell us what's going on and, and need to be paid attention to, and we're always going to be reacting to some things, hopefully at some point we'll get out in front of a few issues and and really have a forward-looking plan and, and be able to implement some things that will direct the way things go, but but a lot of stuff is kind of reactive, and I certainly appreciate all the comments made around this, and I'll end it with that.
Thank you, Commissioner Kwong, did you want to say something? No, okay. Commissioner Powers?
Yeah, well, I agree with Commissioner Crashar about the point in time on the survey. When you had me, Commissioner Gardner, read this, read the twenty nineteen report when I first came on the board, what I found enlightening and educational were the recommendations, which were timeless. It wasn't so much the data at the point in time, it's the recommendations going forward to help with the housing shortage, so. If you want to remove the actual county, the twenty nineteen report, fine, but you shouldn't remove the recommendations. I think the county should consider them.
Thank you. All right, I'm not hearing a motion to specifically change the wording here, but I'll give us a second in case somebody wants to. Otherwise, I think we should move forward. I also appreciate the discussion, I might be running on a steam because we're getting towards lunch, but I'm, I'm trying to get my energy up.
Director Hendrickson answered my question and, and the discussion was great, I, I think we should just move on.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so we've gotten, I think, through general policies and we're now on forest policies and then marine policies, any commentary, questions on these motions on changes? Next is travel industry. I'm, I'm noting we have two people in the construction trade on our commission here, and if, and we did add a narrative section on construction, but I don't know if there's any policies, so if there's anything that I think there's a little bit in here under general, but if there's anything else specifically that you think would be helpful. Get thinking. All right, we're going down to page ninety-seven, human resources, community resources. And then then we're done, so page ninety-nine is the end of this section, so any other final comments, questions, or motions? All right, well, let's go back then to our overreaching motion. Let's see, we have made a change, a proposed change, so the motion that we can make, someone can make, is the planning commission recommends the board of commission adopt goal nine. Draft three as amended. Would someone like to go ahead and make that motion?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make the motion, we adopt the goal five as amended for, to the planning, to the board of commissioners for adoption.
You have a motion, do we have a second?
Can we make that goal nine?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Powers and a second from Commissioner Farrar that the planning commission recommends adoption of goal nine draft three as amended to the plant, to the board of commissioners. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. The motion passes unanimously, thank you. Oh, we're right on time here for lunch, so it's just twelve thirty, so I'm gonna go ahead and we'll take a thirty-minute break for lunch, we'll be back at one o'clock. Here. All right, thank you, everyone, we're still on agenda item number four for the Clatso County Planning Commission for Tuesday, May tenth, two thousand twenty-two. We're looking at economic development, sorry, we're at goal, we're on goal nine economic, no wait, we just finished up goal nine and we're moving on to goal ten. So this is a legislative hearing regarding goal ten housing draft for the Clatso County Comprehensive Plan update, will staff please make their report?
Yes, thank you, Chair Gardner. Goal ten, as stated, deals with housing, it is strictly focused on housing and particularly housing needs in the unincorporated area. Under the statewide planning goals, we as a county and a smaller rural county are not subject to a lot of the requirements that larger cities, even cities the size of Astoria, which has just surpassed its ten thousand population threshold. We don't have many of the same requirements, so for example, we don't have to do an inventory of our buildable lands, we do not have to prepare a housing needs analysis. I know that the previous goal that we just looked at did recommend that the county do that as part of increasing its economic development capabilities and capacities, but it's really not something that's required. So we have done a lot of updates to goal ten since it first started. Probably the biggest update that we did was in response to some comments and directions we received from the board of commissioners back in December of last year. And that related to incorporating the regional housing needs analysis findings. So when we were talking about goal nine before lunch, we talked a lot about the twenty nineteen housing strategies report that was done by the county and the five cities working together with a consultant. And that information, as we discussed before lunch, was probably a little bit outdated and probably has changed significantly since the pandemic started, and how we work and where we live has changed quite a bit. So part of what the regional housing needs analysis does is it takes a, a bigger picture look at the housing needs for an entire region, and so this is something that was done in conjunction with House Bill two thousand three and two thousand one, which was, I believe, both were passed in twenty nineteen. And they look really at how, how we provide that missing middle housing and what our housing needs statewide are. And so the Oregon Housing and Community Services Department was tasked with this, and they did pull that information together. So Clatso County is part of the Northwest Region, which I believe includes Columbia, Clatso, Tillamook and Lincoln Counties, Columbia might not be part of that, but it doesn't include other, all those counties and looks at, first of all, what is the housing stock that's missing in that region, and then what will be needed for the next twenty years? in that region and then what will be needed for the next twenty years. And then based on that, they've allocated housing needs to each of the incorporated areas within those counties. And so you'll notice that the housing figures that are included in our draft of goal ten today do not include a regional housing needs analysis for unincorporated Clatsup County. And the reason for that is that, uh, goal fourteen, which is urbanization, goal eleven, which is public services and facilities really works to channel more intense, uh, development and higher residential densities into the urban growth boundaries where services can be provided and are provided. And so you'll see that the emphasis is not on necessarily ways for unincorporated Clatsup County to suddenly start building multi-story, um, affordable housing projects or things like that. It's really to, uh, to help direct that growth primarily into the urban growth boundary areas. So we did, as I said, we met with the board and had a preliminary discussion on goal ten back in December of last year. We made the required revisions and brought it back to the board at a work session at the beginning of March of this year. And then we did take it to the Joint, uh, Planning Commission Countywide Citizen Advisory Committee on March twenty-second. And the changes that were made at that March twenty-second meeting and the comments that we received have been incorporated into this draft for they're highlighted in yellow with a red text. And, uh, really that concludes my presentation. I did have one item. Christopher R. had noted that there was a discrepancy, uh, in one of the tables, I think table two population, uh, which talks about the, um, Census Bureau population estimates for the county. And then there were some other projections that were put forward by PSU. I did go back and verify these, uh, tables and you'll see that there, there's a difference in the twenty-ten population, but this is what PSU actually published in their study. So I did not change that, even though it differs from what was the actual population that was, uh, shown uh, in, in the census report for twenty-ten. Uh, but other than that, I've tried to the best of our abilities. We've tried to incorporate all the changes made at the March twenty-second meeting. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Director Hendrickson. Any initial questions of staff before we open the public hearing? Hearing none. Um, this hearing is open for public testimony. All speakers from the floor are to state their name and address before speaking. If you're speaking in a representative cap capacity, please state who you are representing. Limit remarks to two minutes. Is there anyone who's interested in speaking, um, in this public hearing today? Hearing none, public testimony is now closed and discussion is open for Planning Commission members. Um, I'd like to point out that in the packet here, um, the document starts on packet page two sixty-two. And, um, again, we're going to be walking through that, uh, step by step. And at the end, we'll make the overreaching recommendation um, to the Board of Commissioners. Any initial questions, comments before we move through the document? Okay, I'm starting on page two sixty-two, then we have the narrative and the overview section. You'll see the changes since the last meeting in yellow and the historical perspective. I'll just note in the historical section, again, it's like, there's a lot of emphasis on two particular sectors of our economy, but not the others, but, um, I don't know that it's worth changing at this point, but we still have that kind of heavy focus. Any proposed changes to those sections? Next is current population and projections. And then page two seventy, the Clatsup County housing need. This might be a time I can just interject. One thing I've just been thinking about, which is that um, especially after what happened with Heritage Square, I'm feeling discouraged about cities doing what they need to do to address this need. And, um, I think it takes some real political will to do the work that needs to be done to provide housing to the people of our communities. And so the county may be the place to do a lot of it and, um, uh, but I worry because, um, it costs money to have development in unincorporated areas. And it also takes a lot of capacity and energy that I don't know that the county has. Like I live in one of these densely populated rural residential areas and we hear time and time again that the county, um, doesn't have the capacity to, and doesn't have the interest frankly, to, um, provide services that the residents here are asking for and, um, you know, roads, drainage, the most basic things. Um, and though right now we're getting our roads all redone, but, um, but generally we get a lot of, um, pushback on that stuff. And so, you know, with more densely more density in other places outside of UGBs. Um, I just think the county needs to be, um, you know, very cognizant of the cost of that to the county, both in capacity and also at expense. And then, of course, there's all the other associated issues with, um, kind of sprawling development, transportation and, um, schooling and all sorts of other things, um, infrastructure. But it's just something that I am constantly thinking about. And when I'm looking at this stuff, it's like we have this need for housing, but then we also have this issue of um, the cost, capacity, infrastructure expansion that it costs. So you know, I think to me, it makes sense to really keep kind of staying at the edge of cities, um, you know, talking with cities about UGB expansions for specific projects that are specific to um, especially workforce housing and affordable housing. We shouldn't have kids living in cars um, in our cities. And so, um, anyway, I just, I've just been thinking about those things and, and I appreciate everybody. You know, the commission has been having some thoughtful conversations about this stuff. Um, you know, it, it, it has to be very thoughtful. Um, I think any of this expansion for, for housing needs and, um, you know, it's, it's frustrating for me when I see uh, proposals like in Gearheart, like this expansion of potentially forty homes. And if they're all over a half a million dollars, which I think they will be. Um, it doesn't provide the kind of housing that is missing according to our studies. And so, um, you know, when we're having that kind of expansion, like, gosh, is there any way that we can make sure that at least some of that is available to people who really need it?
And Nadia on that, I just, I'd like to add in because I, I'm, I'm struggling with this as well. Um, a, as a builder, as a member of this community, my entire life, I, I have employees, I have friends, I have you know, coaches that we have coming into the schools to coach. Um, everybody is looking for affordable housing. Everybody. And, and I get asked, and I'm sure Carrie does too. I, we, we get asked this all the time. Why are houses so expensive? We can't build them any cheaper right now. I mean, it's, it's not even we, we want to and we can't. Maybe if we were, you know, these giant housing developments that are going in, in like Hillsborough area where you've got one developer building a couple hundred houses and they have the buying power that none of us have. And even if we put all of our powers together, it just, it doesn't happen. I mean, I, I'm currently building, and I know Commissioner Johnson is too. I mean, we're building houses that are sixteen, seventeen hundred square foot and, and our cost to acquire the land, to get permits, to do the infrastructure and to buy all the materials and have them done are, are well over the, the affordable housing pricing without even making a profit. We're entitled to a profit, right? I mean, everybody is. That's why we're in business, but we're having, i- it's, it's not anything that we're doing here in the county. It's, it's, you know, we have to have places more available to build. But it's, it's a, it's a common problem and it's all over the place. It's not just because you know, I, I mean, the thing you, you brought up, the thing in Gearheart, well, uh, every one of those houses in Gearheart, all forty-two or whatever was proposed are going to be single family dwellings where either they're lived in full time or the people have the opportunity to have them as a second home, but there will be no vacation rentals there. And, and you're right, they're probably not going to be affordable for people with minimum wage jobs or, or just starting out in life. The, uh, the opportunity for that is just, it, it's really tough. And I, I wish we could come up with something to, uh, to make it better, but it's not going to happen unless the supply chain is, is corrected. Moving forward.
Yeah, I really appreciate that, Commissioner Crashar. Um, I recognize that I have a lot of friends who are in the building trades and just like the, just the supply chain challenges right now, just getting the things you need, like a, a window. Um, and then of course the cost of land and, and other things. I, I really appreciate. I'm like, we've got to find some solution though. Like, how do we figure this out? Um, you know, I bought my house for three hundred and fifty thousand at the peak of the market back in two thousand seven, right before the crash, unfortunately. And, um, for us, it was such a huge stretch and we're not minimum wage workers. We're professionals. And, um, now the house behind us just sold for six hundred and like, we couldn't buy, like, you know, even professionals can't buy houses in that price point. And so, um, you know, it's like, we've got to figure out, you know, whether it's, you know, building more. I don't know. I don't know what the solutions are. I'm not an expert in it, but, um, I'd love to see some creativity around it to, to make it possible. No views would help maybe. I, I don't have a view, but, um, not, not as close to the ocean will be definitely cheaper. Okay, so where are we? We're in two seventy-three is where I'm at. I'm making my way through the narrative.
Chair, Commissioner Farrar's head is hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you, um, Director Hendrickson. And thanks for your patience, Commissioner Farrar, patience.
I was just going to chime in on a couple of points. One, I agree that houses are built for the cost that they cost at the time. And cost is high and all this talk about somehow building more affordable houses, uh, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. It's at the wage end, you need to have people get better paying jobs in order to be able to afford the cost of living that's here in Clatsup County apparently. So it's, it's a circle and we're chasing our tail. I understand that, but it's unrealistic to expect prices of homes to be substantially less than what they are. I did have, uh, a thought though for, for more housing. And I know it's been taken up recently by the Board of Commissioners, but I'm not sure what the outcome is. And that has to do with ADUs in the unincorporated areas and, uh, the potential that has to at least provide someplace for people to have a roof over their head. Um, I know there are problems with pushing more people out into rural areas, but it does give people in rural areas that may not have a great income themselves, uh, some potential for renting an ADU to somebody. Um, that's one way the housing cost, uh, some lower cost houses might be made available. But I had a a nagging question as I looked at some of the tables in the this, uh, section of, of the goal that are, uh, where that housing study that was done regionally and then they distributed, um, then the housing need to the various cities within our county. And I suppose the other three counties involved in the region. And so if you look, for example, on page, uh, two sixty-eight of our packet, Astoria, Cannon Beach and Gearheart are shown and, and the other cities on the next page. And for each of the cities, it shows, uh, the number of units that this study shows are needed by, I think, twenty thirty. And I was kind of astounded to see that, that need is shown to be the most for the most costly, for, for, for the people with the high income. And I, I keep hearing that it's people with marginal incomes or lower incomes. You know, I'm not saying the work they're doing isn't valuable, but they're not paid very well. I thought those were the people that were really having a difficult time finding a place to live here. The people that are waitstaff in a restaurant or they clean rooms in a hotel or some, some related to tourist industry. And yet each of these tables shows that the most units that are needed are single family detached homes with, for people with median incomes of a hundred and twenty percent of, of the median income. And, and the next biggest category tends to be right under that, the eighty to a hundred and twenty percent. And, and the lower down you go, the fewer units that are projected to be needed. And so I'm wondering, is that just wishful thinking or is that based on what's selling these days? Or how do they come up with that need when everything I'm hearing on the street is that the need is flipped the other way, that the low end people need the houses? Does, does anybody?
Director Hendrickson, can you speak to that? How those numbers, where they come from?
Well, these are not numbers the county staff put together. The, these are numbers that were developed as part of the regional housing needs analysis conducted under the mandate of House Bill two thousand one and two thousand three, and it was done by the Oregon, uh, Housing and Community Services. So if you look here, the median family income outside of non-metro areas, uh, was in, in twenty twenty-two is seventy-one thousand eight hundred. So a hundred and twenty percent of that is roughly, and I'm not a math major, but I think it's like eighty-six percent, give or take, or eighty-six thousand, give or take somewhere in that field. Um, if you think about what Chair Gardner just told you, it's not just people who are earning minimum wage, it's people who are earning professional wages. And if your house is selling for six hundred thousand and your mortgage payment is four or five thousand a month, it may not be practical uh, on seventy-one or eighty-five thousand to be able to make that mortgage payment. And that's, doesn't include your utilities. Uh, part of the thought generally, and I can't speak specifically if this was factored in or how it was factored in or what role it played and the size of the role that it might have played in the regional housing needs analysis. But there is a school of thought that people who may be earning a hundred and twenty percent of median family income, but can't find something in their price point, may be renting, uh, places that if otherwise free would be available to people who were lower, earning lower incomes than what they're earning. But because the housing stock is not available, they are taking up those units, which pushes on down the line of income. So I, I can't say with any certainty that that played any factor in this housing needs analysis. Um, I would have to go back to, uh, OHCS and verify and go through their methodology to verify how, how and why they came up with these particular numbers.
I, I appreciate that answer and I understood these weren't numbers that were generated here by county staff. I, I don't know if you'd feel comfortable adding a, a couple of sentences that say it's possible that by building houses that would be affordable by higher income earners in our county, we might free up some less costly housing that's rented right now by them, uh, and free it up for other people. It seems like that would be a pertinent piece of information, maybe to include in the narrative section. But, um, But um. I'm I'm not going to make a motion around that. It's just a little clarification here, I think, would. Help a lot of of people that might look at this in the future to to understand what it's real meaning is.
Just anecdotally, I do hear from professional friends that. There are quite a few that I know that are renting because they cannot afford to buy something. So like, just anecdotally, that does make sense. It's like if they were able to buy something. But then, of course, rent is just outrageous. So it's it's not a natural thing that that. Lower-income people can move into those places if they've been rented for thousands of dollars. Um, yes, Commissioner Crusher. And then, sorry, after that, Commissioner Kwong.
I I I believe he was before me. Go ahead, Commissioner Kwong.
Yeah, um, I had brought this idea uh, forth before, but I don't know. Didn't seem like that was very well received, but um, or very well articulated, but um. The idea of uh, intentional community is what um. I'm really interested in. For example, if you have a piece of land, let's say an acre or more with. Four or five tiny houses on them and allow people to live in and have having a common. Uh, house that is uh, more like, you know, you where you come to cook and and do other things. And having shared space is seem to me that's a good uh, solution. But um, that is, but that would uh, I mean, the county would have vastly changed our code zoning. To be able to allow that. But yeah, that I guess that's that's not as that's an idea kind of.
Thank you, Commissioner Kwong. I think there is a policy when we get down there around um. I don't know, I was thinking there. There's been some discussion about, well, there's definitely cluster developments and then some discussion about uh, tiny homes and RVs. So like for around homeless, houseless solutions, that's definitely been, I think, discussed. By cities as well as as the county, um, but not in the kind of intentional community um, aspect. But I'll say there's a really cool, like cottage cluster type development in Manzanita that they did. That is, you know, like all common yards, basically. Everybody just has like a little space to do their own, like. Little flowers or or vegetable garden or something, but um. They're very small homes. Like, I think often when you hear like cottage cluster, they end up being these like big homes around common space. And so that doesn't. Quite solve the problem, but um. But this one is quite small and I do, I know several people who live in there and um, there's both homeowners and renters in there and it's much more reasonable. Manzoni is a very expensive place. And so it's away from the ocean and it has these small spaces that that are more reasonable um, than others. So that's kind of a cool. Opportunity. I'm sorry, Commissioner Kraschar. I I usurped your time. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna kind of piggyback on that. That was what I was gonna bring up is, I think the need for, I'm I'm not a fan of. Like pods with one community building. I'm I'm a fan of. Opening things up to where if someone has an acre or two and, you know, I I know that we're. We're in like a catch twenty-two, a double-edged sword, right? We want to preserve what we have, but we also have a very, very huge need for housing. We have to start opening our minds up and have, you know, a little give and take. So there's there's a lot of stuff. I think that these. Tiny homes or whatever you want to call them, or just subdividing some of the lots that that are out in the county would. Would suffice us a lot. I mean, if if we're fighting with, you know, two or three acres out here or one, there's one acre parcels, there's two acre parcels, there's five acre parcels. If we were able to shrink those a little bit and put some tiny homes on there or smaller homes or whatever you want, that are fully. Self-contained, you know, they have a kitchen and and a bathroom and either one bedroom or a loft style or whatever the. The person wants. I think that that is a a big opportunity to be able to build something at an affordable price. The other part of that is, you know, there's a lot of people. So I I think I scrolled down here. There's there's one of the problems that, you know, they start saying failing septic systems or or water available. It it's. To me, it's all a matter of accountability and and the county's starting and with the the septic program. I- i- if if they have the program. In effect and you have to have a maintenance provider and you have to have it serviced once a year or twice a year or whatever it is. I mean, that's also. A job opportunity for somebody because we're going to need more people to service those things and and keep them up to date. If if they're serviced. Then they'll they'll last longer. They won't fail. Um, but I I think that that's something that us as a group has to really look towards. Building goals uh, to go that route. I mean. The 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 state of Oregon, they would rather you build up than out. They're trying to see, you know, more density in cities. The county has to follow that at some point with conserving our forest lands and our. Our open spaces and everything else, but there has to be some sort of give and take as far as uh. Being able to accommodate the people that need houses here. And that's that's what I think about the whole. Crisis in housing.
Thank you. Um, I'll note, so on page um. Two seventy-three, there's a new section there. And it was talking about like what's vacant or partially vacant. And um, there's note there about. We have a minimum two-acre parcel size in the county and it's by state statute. Do you want to speak to that, Director Hendrickson?
Yes, the county has a state mandated two-acre minimum lot size that came about, I believe, in two thousand. And I think stemmed from a some litigation that occurred with One Thousand Friends of Oregon. And I don't remember who they were a party against, but uh, the basic offshoot, as I understand it, is that we now have, I believe, as of October something. Two thousand, a two-acre minimum lot size.
So that does constrain us on the state side of going smaller than that, but um, but we can work on the margins of the cities.
Director Henderson, if if we had, if we kept that, could the county then allow more than one dwelling on that said? Four acres. So say I own two acres and I want to build, we're we're talking about ADUs, but. Maybe if you have two acres or three acres or four acres, how many ADUs per acre you could do? This goes to, you know, if if I'm going to buy a house for. Well, I was just looking here a second ago, a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar house is is about twenty-two thousand dollars a year in mortgage at four percent without. Taxes and insurance, but if I'm going to build a little bit bigger house and be able to rent two or three ADUs full-time, not. Vacation rentals. I mean, I'm talking full-time residences. That would be like a conditional use of that. Could we not dictate? How many um. Dwellings per acre, I guess, is what I'm asking, or?
Yeah, so um, to bring the commission back to January of this year, and I'm not sure if all of you were on the. I don't think all of you were on the commission at that point, but we had an initial discussion about Senate Bill three ninety-one, which. Uh, at the state level opened up those RA one, RA two, RA five zones, all those rural residential lands. Where previously state law prohibited them having an accessory dwelling unit on it, did allow local governments. To make the decision to allow a rural accessory dwelling unit. Uh, but it would just be one. They only, under state statute, there would only be one that could be constructed. So. During your discussion back in January. You made, you had some preliminary discussion. Uh, you really emphasized the need. Uh, that the county should first of all promote and encourage people to build ADUs in areas where they're already permitted. So. Um, an example would be the Arch Cape Zone, yeah, already allows accessory dwelling units. So the county should put their. Primary focus on those areas uh, where they're already permitted to help encourage those, that construction to move forward first. Before opening up rural lands to additional development. Part of your recommendation was also to uh, require any new accessory dwelling units in those rural areas. To be uh, reviewed and approved in a public hearing process. So that would um. To have to take place before, uh, unlike, say, the Arch Cape Zone or other zones where their. Uh, accessory dwelling units are already permitted and it's just basically an over-the-counter permit, new ADUs in these rural areas. Your recommendation to the board was basically that they have to go through a public hearing process. The board will be discussing all your uh, initial. Recommendations to them at tomorrow night's meeting and at actually at their work session at five o'clock. Um, so that uh, we're going to get their feedback and then we'll draft some additional amendments that will actually come back before your planning commission, probably in July or August. Uh, for final recommendation to the board. So to kind of a long answer, but I wanted to make sure you all had the context. Of what's going on with accessory dwelling units in the rural areas. So first of all, they were limited by state statute. Now they're being opened up, but the ultimate goal is. Result is only one ADU per parcel.
So on a two-acre lot, you you can only have one house and with that house you can have, or depending on the zoning, one house or one. Like it could, in some areas you can have multifamily housing. So like an arch cape, I know you can have a duplex. And then you could also have a um. ADU. But you can't have like a bunch of houses. On a one-acre, two-acre, or five-acre.
Correct.
Right, under current rules, yeah. Um. Well, on the ADU thing, just to note. I think that we were in agreement that all those things should happen. It's just about a matter of like um. You know, I feel it was just a matter of um, like, we have a lot to do and there's like low-hanging fruit and there's more difficult fruit. And the low-hanging fruit is to to show everyone, to let everyone know, because I feel like a lot of people don't know that any place in the county that has. Water and sanitary service, it currently is legal to build an ADU. And I think most people don't know that. And then the second is we, in those areas, we've made it a little tricky. You know, it may be more difficult than it should be to build ADUs in those areas. So like, let's look at that ordinance and see if we can make it a little bit more user-friendly, builder-friendly. And then third is, we have this opportunity to change the code, which takes longer and is more effort. So. So the intention was to do all three, but just that it was, there's these other opportunities with stuff that's a little more um, low-hanging fruit. But uh, yeah. Um, okay, well, so this is all really great discussion. I'm sorry, um, Commissioner Kraschar, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that in our county, we don't have sanitary services, though, in the actual county portion.
We do, yeah. Some areas do have um, sewer. So um, I think there's like, are there five areas? Um. Director Hendrickson?
Uh, there is Arch Cave, uh, Shoreline, which is basically connected to Warrenton at this point. There's a small system out in Westport and there are miles crossing Jeffers Garden has some. So there might, there might be a fifth one, but but right now, state statute does didn't until Senate Bill three ninety-one. We couldn't allow ADUs on rural lands. And but now the Senate or the Senate, the legislature has opened that up and given counties. We're not required to do it, but it's given us the opportunities. So we are basically, other than some basic parameters given to us by the state, we as a county. Decide what process those applicants would go through, for example, and which zones they would be permitted in. And so if our emphasis is going to be. Um, promoting the ADUs first and primarily in areas that are already hooked up to sewer. Um, and then requiring ADUs in the rural areas that will be on septic to go through a public hearing. Um, and and that process, that's our decision to make. And that in January is what the planning commission has put forward. That's going to the board for discussion tomorrow evening.
Um, Mr. Assistant also put in the chat a note that um, the Senate bill that made it legal to do it in rural residential areas requires a. Two-acre minimum, so smaller than that doesn't allow them. And he also noted that with multifamily dwellings like duplexes, you can't actually have an ADU. So um. That's interesting. So thank you. Um, I think we should, so this is all really good inspir- um, it a discussion and um, we should look, I think, when we. Let's keep moving our way through the narrative. And then when we look at the policies, I think we could see if like what we're interested in is covered and if not. At that time, we could um, make some motions to amend it, um, if that makes sense to people. Is that okay, Commissioner Crusher? Do you have more? Want to talk about on that? Okay. Okay, so I'm making my way down to seventy-five. Let's go to um, current conditions. Um, there is a section here on the septic systems. I think um, we had talked briefly on that page two eighty. And I had a question. I don't even know the rules in Clatsop County. So um, do we have like required septic inspections on a period? And what happens if there's failures or is it when properties sell? Like, what is the process around septic systems?
Um, I have only a very small understanding because it's handled through our environmental health uh, division within the public health department. But the new septic systems are and certain types of systems are required to have a yearly. A a contract so they're inspected. Um, and that maintenance report is supposed to be turned into environmental health every year. So what's we're seeing is that people are not getting that done. So we did go to the board several months ago with uh, some proposed changes to the codes so that. Uh, co-compliance could take over those enforcement responsibilities from public health and environmental health. Uh, the board sent us back with a a lot of questions and concerns about that. The the cost, as I understand it, is roughly about two hundred and fifty a year for that maintenance inspection. And uh, we're just not getting a lot of compliance on it. So. It's there. The other part of the puzzle or the the process is that we we have um, an issue with septic capacity right now. So whereas Warrenton used to take in a lot of the septic that was being pumped out of septic systems throughout the county. They have stopped doing that. And so haulers now are having to go to Tillamook County or to Rainier, or in some cases even past Portland in order to. Um, get rid of the the septic that they've uh, taken out of se- septic systems here in Clatsop County. And that's part of the reason that. Uh, the county has been working with some of the businesses in the cities to. Uh, look at the feasibility of an anaerobic digester and a site for that so that we could pull off some of that. Um, for example, I think breweries are a big component of what they're dumping into the. Into the uh, system and pulling some of that off and using it separately. And that would free up some capacity for residential uh, septic. Which is now of getting, reaching its capacity.
Right, I saw that in the Astoria is challenged by that, I think, but. Um, so so this new septic, but if it's old septic, is there no like inspection requirements?
I would have to go back and look at the rules again. I, we don't deal with this on a daily basis, so I'm not as intimately familiar with it as I might be with some other items. But I can check on that and bring that information back to you.
Do you know, Commissioner Crusher?
I I am a certified septic installer in this county and I know that when I go to build a new system. Along with my application, before they will issue me a permit, I have to have an uh, an operating and maintenance agreement paid for. And signed by one of the operating and maintenance agreement companies in the county. There are, there's a list of them. They have them at DEQ. There's several of them. It ranges, you know, two fifty to three hundred and fifty dollars per year. When I build a new house and I send it in and I get it all done, once, you know, I I have to submit a plot map that that uh, says. I have to dig a test hole. They have to come out and inspect it. There's two test holes on the property for a um, primary and a secondary system. So when the, if the first one fails. You have to have room for two. They come out, they inspect them, they certify you, they make sure that your plot map is away from the property lines, away from any wells. Away from the houses, everything else. So then when you build said septic, septic, excuse me, septic system. They come out and do a final inspection, they issue a final permit. And then I know because I've built. A few houses within the last few years that have septic systems. And I've gotten calls from the homeowners because as the builder, I provide the first year's uh, operating and maintenance agreement. And pay for it and get it all done. And when they buy it, they're supposed to, they're supposed to continue it. And I'm getting calls. And I'm getting calls from homeowners that have bought houses that I've bought, that the county is actually holding them accountable. And if they don't have their operating and maintenance agreement going forward, that they're issuing them. I don't know if it's a citation or warnings telling them that they have a certain amount of time to get that operating agreement to them. Now that's with, that's with septic systems. I think they started this within the last year to two years of, of holding them accountable. And I've heard that they're trying to go back, but it's, it's obviously overwhelming. They're, they're very limited staff to try and hold all of the, all of the systems on record accountable for those operating and maintenance agreements. That's just in my personal experiences as to what's going on. Now they're, I, I believe they're moving forward. I believe it's a great program. They're gonna, they're going to make sure that people are being proactive instead of reactive when these systems are failing and overflowing and, and failed. Rather than being in an emergency, they're, they're holding people accountable for inspecting them once a year.
Thank you for that information. That's really important. Yeah, I think I, I worked in Pacific County and I remember every time a property sold, they had to inspect. And if it was failing, it had to be replaced as part of the transaction, which seemed to make sense to me, but I don't know about other stuff. Yeah, Director Henrickson?
Yeah. And just to follow up on the question about if it's required for older systems. So for a pressurized system, and I am not a septic person, but a pressurized system permitted prior to January 1st, 2014. They're not required to have operation and maintenance contract, but the new systems after that do have to have the O and M agreement. So.
Thank you. It's the last eight years. Okay. Making our way down through this, I think I'm going to ask for any last comments or questions on the narrative up to page 284 of the packet. And then we're on to the objectives and policies. All right, let's move on to the objectives and policies. First is urbanization and development policies. Any questions, comments, proposed changes? Okay. Housing policies, residential development. So I see under policy C, Clotset County shall encourage planned developments and subdivisions to cluster dwelling units. That's something that you already see somewhat. Yes, Commissioner Farrar?
I had a couple of suggestions on this category here. One is that a policy in a different category be more appropriately possibly put in this section. So I'd like to, I guess the best way to do it is to put it in here. It, I'm, I'm referring now to housing rehabilitation. There are three policies in that section and policy B says the rural housing needs should be reexamined every two years to reflect the market changes and new information. And to me, that didn't seem like housing rehabilitation. I thought it would be better just to move that policy into this general residential development thing.
Director Henrickson, do you have background on why that's in that section?
I'm trying to find which section.
Page 288.
It's on page 288 of the packet or page. Well, I can't see the page numbers.
I, yeah, I see what you're looking at. I don't, I don't know specifically why that ended up there.
Okay. So Commissioner Farrar, do you want to make a motion to move policy B under housing rehabilitation up to?
To the residential.
Residential development.
Development section. And I guess it could just be the last, that last policy in line there.
Okay. Do we have a second for that motion? Are we awake? I don't hear a second there. So it will die for lack of a second unless anyone is interested.
Can I hear that motion, a short restatement of the motion again?
Yes. So we have a, a motion from Commissioner Farrar to move policy B under housing policies, housing rehabilitation. It reads, the rural housing need should be reexamined every two years to reflect the market changes and new information. Move that up to the section that we were looking at on page 285 residential development.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Farrar, any more under residential development or government cooperation?
Yeah, under residential development, I thought a policy should be added. And I have some wording here for it. So I'll, I'll read it as is and see if anybody will second this. And then we can maybe put the policy language on the screen. It, it would be the county should continue to explore options for and implement plans to fund site and build a biodigester for processing and disposal of septic pumped from systems in unincorporated areas of the county. So I know the county is looking at this. I just feel it should be a policy that we should stay on it until we have a county facility that can handle the septic generated in the unincorporated part of the county. And I can, I can read that more slowly because I know it's kind of a verbose.
I think that Director Henrickson has it up there on the screen. I'll read it. So the motion is to add under residential development, a policy Q, the county should continue to explore options for and implement plans to fund site, fund comma, site and build a biodigester for processing and disposal of septic pumped from systems in unincorporated areas of the county. Does that cover it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. We have a second from Commissioner Powers. Thank you. Any discussion? I'm all for it. Okay. Yeah. Commissioner Crusher is like, yes, easier. Okay. Um, all those in favor? Oh, sorry. Commissioner Quam, are you in favor?
Oh, I, I have a question first. I guess for the session. So what happened to the final product of once the biodigester has done its work? That's, I guess that's, yeah, that's my question.
Good question, Director Henrickson?
Again, I'm not a biodigester expert. I think that they're trying, part of the feasibility study is what they can do with that. If there's a way to be able to burn or utilize some of that digesting process to generate electricity, what happens with any of the sludge that's left over? I don't know. I could, I would have to find that out and get back to you on what they do with the remainder of what's left.
I think some places sell it or give it away for fertilizer.
Seaside has something similar to this already that they've used to create a puck. From what I've heard them refer it to, you know, when it just burns it down and condenses it down. I think that they, they, I, I know a couple of guys down there and we've had vague conversations. I think that they can be used as fertilizer in certain areas and, and spread out. I, I haven't heard anything bad towards it in Seaside, other than the, the machine smashed one of the guy's hands at one time. That's the only thing bad that I've heard them talk about it when, when they were in there trying to work on it, but that's it.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, it's to add policy Q to residential development, I think residential, residential development. The county should continue to explore options for and implement plans to fund site and build a biodigester for processing and disposal of septic pumped from systems in unincorporated areas of the county. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. I wanted to note the, what's now policy O says Clotset County should consider allowing tiny homes in residential zones that follow the standard rules. So that is in here already, as I thought it, I thought it was here. That was added in the last CAC meeting. It still have to be under the state rules. So a little tricky, but I know they've been exploring it in some of the cities too, like Warrenton. Anything under governmental cooperation and coordination? You have that, those policies at the bottom there around ADU. And that includes where they're allowed now and where they're allowed in the future. So just, I wanted to note, I, I did look up finally, the Portland, Portland's changed their ADU incentives. And they've, they used to have just like these permit fee waivers. And, but then they realized all the ADs that were being built became short-term rentals. So that wasn't really helping. So they really limited now. And if you, if you get an incentive, you have to be providing long-term housing in the, in those units. You can still build them, but you can't get the incentives. So they have SDCs, system development charges waivers. And they're significant. They're like 14 to $20,000 SDCs there. So, and then you have, I think, a certain period of time that you have to use that unit for housing. Thought that was interesting. Okay. The next section is Clotset County Housing Strategies Report. So this is actually specific to the report itself that we've been talking about. And then housing rehabilitation. I think Commissioner Farrar, did you have something else under this one or?
Yes, I, I did. I, I looked at that section and felt it was pretty light on ideas for rehabilitating. And I, I'm a Astoria kind of guy. And if you've walked around there much, you probably noticed a few dilapidated homes. Quite unfortunate. And what I'd like to see is a couple more policies added here. One to address the failing septic systems, which of course doesn't include places like Astoria, but would be appropriate for the county's unincorporated land. So I'd like something in the way of a policy that says the county will continue to work with Craft 3 and the Community Action Team to obtain DEQ or other sources of monetary support for property owners to repair or replace failing septic systems. So there's apparently been some DEQ money made available recently. Or through DEQ, I think it's actually federal money that's been set aside just for this purpose. I would like our county to explore tapping into that funding. So it's, the county will continue to work with Craft 3 and CAT to obtain DEQ or other sources of monetary support for property owners to repair or replace failing septic systems. I appreciate how quickly you can type.
Absolutely. I was thinking the same thing. So we have a motion to add under housing policies, housing rehabilitation. Policy C, the county will continue to work with Craft 3 and the Community Action Team to obtain DQ and other funding. Think.
Yeah, or, or other.
Or, or, or other funding to aid homeowners in repairing and replace. Yeah, for homeowners or.
To, yeah, monetary support for property owners to repair and or replace failing septic systems.
Still doing a little word, wordsmithing here, but I think people get the idea. And so do we have a second for that motion? Before we do. Commissioner Quang seconds that. Okay. Did you have a, a comment, Commissioner Quang or question?
Not on this, but on something else, on, on lead issues that we'll go ahead and go through this book and then I'll, I'll talk about lead.
Okay. You're next on that. Okay. So, so we have a motion in a second to add policy C, the county will continue to work with Craft 3 and the Community Action Team to obtain DQ or other funding to aid homeowners with monetary assistance to repair or replace failing septic systems. Any discussion? Yes, Commissioner Crusher?
Sorry. I don't know how to put up the hand, you guys. My, my question is why Craft 3? Craft 3 is a lender, correct?
Yes.
My, my only, my only thing is putting something into this. I don't think we should state a specific company. I think that we should be open to all and not just state that in a, in a county document.
Oh, well, that, that may be appropriate. The reason I put that in there is they're mentioned in the narrative section, I believe. And so there's been some ongoing work with Craft 3 and Community Action Team. So I just thought, you know, I'm acknowledging that the county is working on this to a certain extent and to just keep doing it, but do it better.
I, I would be willing to, to agree with this. I just, if, if we take out a specific company name, the Community Action Team is totally different. But Craft 3 is a for-profit company that, I mean, in my opinion.
Okay. Well, I didn't even know that. So I appreciate your comments, but I'll leave it to others to discuss their points of view.
Director Henrickson, did you want to make comment on this?
I just wanted to give a little information about the DEQ funding. DEQ to get ARPA funds and they did a basically a call for interest to local governments and appropriate agencies to see what type of projects funding would be used for if it were made available. And so the county did respond to that request for information. Detailing basically where we have failing septic systems. We have whole subdivisions where septic systems were basically installed at the same time and will likely all fail at the same time or begin to fail at the same time. The decision by DEQ is that the funding this go around would be available only to areas where that suffered through wildfires in 2020. And that, that would be where the money would be launched. So we weren't, we will not be eligible. If they have any funding left over in the fall, they'll do another call that the county may be eligible for. But right now that money is earmarked for wildfire recovery response. We also worked with contacted Craft 3 as part of that process because we were interested in putting together basically. because we were interested in putting together basically a continuum of funding where if we were to, as a county to get DEQ funds, we would want to do that as grants to the people who couldn't least afford the repair or replacement for their septic systems. And then as people transitioned up the financial scale to be able to transition them over to Craft Three, either partly using grant funny from, money from the county or having them completely go through Craft Three for low interest loan. Uh, Craft Three wasn't too interested in the grant part of it. Um, not even as a pass-through type of situation. They were strictly focused on their, their loan products. Uh, we also have worked with Community Action Team who is much more interested in the grant funding, but again, uh, it won't be available until the earliest at, uh, the fall of this year. So that's the background on that.
Thank you, Director Henrickson. What I might suggest is that we just, um, make it more general and remove both Craft Three and Community Action Team and just say the county will continue to work with partners to obtain DEQ or other funding. So it just keeps it more general so that we have like a focus on the septic issue and getting money, but doesn't identify, um, the entities that they're going to be working with. Does that make sense? Okay.
That's fine. I, I accept that modification.
Friendly amendment, um, from the, um, person who'd made the motion, Commissioner Farrar. And Commissioner Kwong, are you okay with that change as the person who seconded?
Yes, yes.
Okay, any other discussion on this motion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Kwong, you're up.
Um, so, um, we had owned a house in Portland and there, we did a, uh, when we started having kids, we, um, applied for the, um, let, lead abatement program in Portland and, and I guess to the county there and they went, they came out and replaced all of our windows for free. Um, to, I guess, to a federal grant program. So when we moved out here and we, uh, did a, a lead test on a house and it was, um, was positive and, but we couldn't get any funding because the county is not, um, was not, did not participate in the program. The only way that we could have done anything was once a kid tested high for the lead level, then uh, they can step in and do something about it. So I'm wondering if, uh, that money is still available and maybe the county can, uh, participate in that program, especially under the, uh, housing rehabilitation, uh, section.
Director Henrickson, has there been discussion about lead abatement in the county? I'm sure it's a problem in some of our older cities for sure too, but.
There may have been. They would have probably been conducted in the public health department, so I would need to check on that and get back to you with that information.
So, I mean, you could make a motion. I, I wonder, I mean, it would be good to have additional information before an additional section was, additional policy was here, Commissioner Kwong, but you could make a motion to add some exploration policy if you're interested.
Yeah, I would, uh, I would love to do that. I would like, make, make a motion to um, have the county explorer get the, of fundings for lead abatement program.
All right, we have a motion to add policy D under housing rehabilitation. The couns, county should explore funding options for a lead abatement program. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Farrar seconds. Any discussion?
So, this is Commissioner Crashar. I, I used to own a, a window company in two thousand five, six, all the way through nine. Um, and I, I actually did this program. Um, we, we changed windows on quite a few houses that qualified. And then from my understanding, it stopped. There was state funding and there was some sort of federal funding that the homeowner had to apply for. They had to have a licensed contractor come out, do a test, which we would do, but I don't know if there's anything available. We've, we, we used to do it, but then I was told by the state that it ended a while ago. So I don't know. I don't know if that's a county thing or not, but it would be a, it's a good program.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? We'll go to a vote. All right, all those in favor of this policy, please say yes or aye.
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 Any opposed? Please say no. Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Farrar, did you have any more comments for this section or can we move on?
I thought it might be appropriate to add a policy, uh, that the county should explore funding options or support to homeowners that want to improve the insulation of their homes for energy, energy conservation and reducing the cost of, uh, primarily heating where we are, but, um, so the, the county should explore, um, funding options or grants to provide, uh, the funds for, for upgrading, uh, home insulation or building insulation, let's say, to reduce energy consumption and reduce homeowner cost of, uh, energy.
We have a motion under housing rehabilitation to add policy E. The county should explore funding options or grants to provide the funds for upgrading building insulation to reduce energy consumption and reduce homeowner costs of energy. Uh, do we have a second for that motion?
I'll, I'll second that.
Commissioner Kwong seconds. Any discussion? So I think this is in the category of trying to keep homeowners in their homes. And, um, one of our biggest expenses, well, one of our expenses as homeowners is heating and, you know, more and more cooling, not in my house though. Um, and, uh, so, um, I think energy efficiency, just generally windows, doors, insulation, all those things that make our houses more efficient do two things. One is, um, you know, saves energy, which is better for climate mitigation and other environmental reasons, but um, for this section, it's reducing homeownership costs and, and also renting costs too, actually. Um, so I do think it is important in that, you know, that core goal that those people are in homes, are able to stay in their homes and especially for people on fixed incomes or limited incomes. That's my comment. Any other questions? Comments? Okay, all those in favor of, um, policy E. The county should explore funding options to grants, for grants to provide funds for upgrading building insulation to reduce energy conservation and reduce homeowner cost of energy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say nay or no. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, um, unsheltered persons, last policy section, really important one. I think up to now, we've kind of left a lot of this work to the cities, um, but we certainly have a role to play as the county. Things have changed the last three years for sure. Any, um, motions, any additions, any conversation around this, these policies? I will note, we added policy D around RV use and we did discuss this as a commission a couple of years ago. And we were worried that, um, RVs do provide important transitional housing for people in unsheltered situations and it feels like it's grown exponentially. I think it has grown exponentially, but it's been happening for a very long time. I lived for a moment in my twenties in California and there's, there's a huge RV living culture actually down there. Um, but, um, I think we had said we were worried about it being kind of scattered throughout the landscape and especially, um, you know, the garbage and sewer issues that might ensue as a result, but things definitely have changed since we had that conversation. Um, so I think it is important that we, uh, you know, again revisit that, that, um, topic, um, as a county and also as a body. All right, if people are good with this section as is, we can go ahead and close this public hearing. Um, all right, so, um, let's, uh, go ahead and go back to our main motion, um, which would be the Planning Commission recommends that the Board of Commissioners adopts Goal Ten Draft Four as amended. Is anyone willing to make that motion today?
I'll, I'll move to, uh, have the Planning Commission, um, recommend to the Board of Commissioners, they adopt the Goal Ten Housing Draft Four, uh, as amended.
Thank you. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Johnson, second sub-motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Please say no. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We're on to our fourth and final public hearing of the day. Thanks for everybody's, um, patience. I'm going to try to wrap this meeting up in forty-five minutes, so we'll see how we do. Um, this is a legislative hearing regarding Goal Nineteen Ocean Resources Draft Three and the Clatso County Comprehensive Plan, uh, update. Um, will the staff please make their report?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is David Cook, planner from Clatso County Community Development. Uh, we have prepared draft three of the Comprehensive Plan Goal Nineteen Update. Um, Goal Nineteen for Ocean Resources is established to conserve marine resources and ecological functions for the purpose of providing long-term ecological, economic and social value and benefits to future generations. Um, to give a brief summary of Goal Nineteen updates thus far, uh, we did bring, uh, the first draft to the, uh, County Commissioners in, uh, January of this year. Um, we then brought, um, a draft two to the Joint Planning Commission and Community Advisory Committee or Citizen Advisory Committee, um, just a few weeks ago. Um, and now we have pre, prepared draft three, um, in the agenda packet. Let me share my screen here. So you guys have everything. Um, in the agenda packet, I've provided a sort of a brief summary of the, uh, recommendations and motions that were, uh, addressed at the Citizen Advisory Committee and Planning Commission meeting a few weeks ago. Um, the revisions and motions that were added into draft number three. So without further ado, I will, um, kick it back to you, Nadia, for, uh, discussion.
Thank you for that efficient intro, Mr. Cook. Um, so we're looking at, uh, page two ninety of our packet today. And, um, again, we are going to walk through the document and then, um, make any proposed amendments if we have any, and then come back to our, um, main, um, motion to recommend um, this final draft to, um, the Board of Commissioners. Do you have, uh, does any of the Commissioners have any initial questions of staff, um, before we, um, take public comment? Hearing none. Um, the, this hearing is now open for public testimony. All speakers from the floor are to state their name and address before speaking. If you're appearing as a representative, let us know who you are representing and limit your remarks to two minutes. Is there anyone who wishes to speak today? Hearing none, and since no one is here, um, the public testimony is now closed. Discussion is open for Planning Commissioners. Um, thank you, um, Mr. Cook here. We're on, um, the first page of the, um, comp plan update. Um, page two ninety-one is the overview section. And, um, as we requested in our last meeting, the, um, there's a nice new paragraph right up front talking about a lot of the, um, entities, mostly governmental entities that are involved in, um, the territorial sea, which is a pretty complex jurisdictional wicket, sticky wicket. Thank you for that. Any, um, questions or comments for the first two sections, the overview and the historic perspective sections? I think those are underlined when the other ones are not underlined, or no, just the historic perspective is, it's a funny little typo there. David. Current conditions. We've added the sections on the Marine Reserve and the Beach Monitoring Program, which is really the nearshore ocean monitoring program. Future conditions. Added some information about the importance of fisheries. And clarification on marine pollution coming from land and our role in it. And that wraps up the narrative. Any questions, concerns, amendments to that section before we look at the objectives? Commissioner Farrar?
It's, it's just to point out, uh, of, a sentence that needs to be reworded a, a little bit under Oregon Marine Reserves. That last sentence, uh, so, some, there's some typographical problem with it under Ocean Beach Monitoring Program. Such advisories periodically occur nearshore ocean off on Clatso County. It just, you know, s- s- some got off in the typing there, but that can be fixed.
Such advisories periodically occur in the nearshore ocean off Clatso County, especially in summer months. All right, that's just a little edit, so I don't think we need to make a motion there. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to objectives and policies. Um, big addition here with, uh, territorial sea plan consultation process. Then we added those D enough to address some of the ocean pollutions, land-based ocean pollution. Any questions, comments, amendments to objective one? That's it. It's pretty simple section. People feel uncomfortable with it?
I think it helps when only two weeks has gone by since you last revised it.
Right.
Find it acceptable.
Yeah. All right, well, I'm looking then for a final recommendation. The Planning Commission recommends that the Board of Commissioner adopt Goal Nineteen Ocean Resources Draft Three as submitted by staff. Who's going to make it?
I'll make that motion. Exactly.
Okay, um, Commissioner Crashar moves that the Planning Commission recommends the Board of Commissioner adopts Goal Nineteen Ocean Resources Draft Three as submitted by staff. And that's.
I'll second.
Okay, um. Okay, and we have, so we have a motion from Commissioner Crasher and a second from Commissioner Farrar. And any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Please say no. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. And the hearing is now closed. All four hearings are now closed. And these recommendations will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners for their approval at a future meeting. Any other final comments on those, Director Henrickson? All right, we made it. And so we just have a few more things on our agenda tonight, this afternoon, feels like tonight sometimes. Um, project status report, any questions on the chart? Here, is that picture of something that got finished?
Yeah, it's finished. I don't know when it was finished. This is out at Nat Creek Fisheries.
Oh, the hatchery, yeah. Like that giant salmon up there. Okay, cool. Any questions from the Commissioners around the around the project status report? These are all the, at least in the last couple of years, the projects that we have approved and where they are in their process. Okay, I'm hearing none. Let's move on to the Director's report.
Okay, so I think I had listed four topics to talk about. First one being Planning Commission interviews. Those will be taking place at 3:30 PM on May 23. We did have eight applicants, including four that were held over from last time and four new applicants that came in before our May 2 deadline. I do want to note that both Commissioner Orr and Chair Gardner did not submit applications. So this will likely, we have likely one last meeting with them. So I just wanted to make sure to point out that we do want to thank them for their work on the, on the Planning Commission and their time that they've committed to working with the county on these issues. The second item related to the TFP, we are hoping, we don't have that scheduled yet. I was hoping to have tentative scheduled date for today's meeting, but we do not have that. I would anticipate probably sometime in June or July that will go to the board for final review and approval. The short-term rental units, we, on April 27, the board approved two ordinances. Ordinance 2201 relocated the operating standards for Arch Cape short-term rentals and took it out of our zoning code and transferred it over to the Clatso County Code. And then Ordinance 2203 revised some of the operating standards for short-term rentals out in unincorporated county but outside of Arch Cape. So on May 18 at a work session, interesting, at May 18 at a work session, which will begin at 10 o'clock, the board will be reviewing data that they asked, that they asked staff to compile regarding the impacts of short-term rentals on housing pricing and availability. So that will be at the end of their agenda on May 18 at 10 o'clock in the morning. And then finally, we did talk about rural ADUs. That discussion will be happening with the board tomorrow at 5 o'clock at their work session. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Henrickson. Any questions of staff on what they discussed and any other planning projects? Yes, Commissioner Powers?
Yeah, how many vacancies are there coming up now to be filled since we have two people who didn't renew?
Yeah, there are three positions all total. So it's Commissioner Kwong's, Chair Gardner's and Commissioner Orr's positions all expire on June 30 of this year. And so Commissioner Kwong has applied to be reappointed. And it's at the discussion of the discretion of the board as to who they want to appoint or reappoint.
Yeah, I understand. And the other question was on short-term rentals. Has a board acted at all upon the recommendation by the Planning Commission on zoning?
They have not. So when we took the, the two recommendations, the one from your, your Planning Commission and the one that staff had put forward based on board direction, we took those to the planning, to the board on April 13. The board basically at that point said, we want to have more information, which is what we're bringing to them on May 18 about how short-term rentals impact housing pricing and availability in the county. And so they'll be reviewing that on May 18 and then giving more direction to staff as to how they want to proceed with any zoning changes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any final questions or comments? Is there anything for good of the order? Do any of the Planning Commissioners have anything relevant to Clatso County or the Planning Commission they'd like to report? All right, hearing none. The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great afternoon.